So, good morning, everybody. Want to welcome you to the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Swicker if he would come forward and give us an invocation. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Let us pray. God of life and love, you gave us the greatest example in coming not to be served but to serve others in Mark ten forty-five. As we gather here in gratitude for those who serve the people of Calvert County, as well as those who are served, we give you thanks for life, liberty, and love. For these county commissioners this morning, Lord, we bless them in the holy name of God, asking you to pour out your grace and mercy upon them as they do their work, as they relate to people in their care, and all of their lives inside and outside this room. Bless this meeting with your guidance, divine creator. Give wisdom to those who discuss, make decisions, and offer help to all who live and travel here, and help us to remember all of your people as best we can, working within the limits of our human frailties and faults, but help us to give our best effort when serving others in your holy name. We pray in the name of the one who was crucified, died, and rose again. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Swicker. And Reverend Swicker comes us today from Trinity Church right here in Prince Frederick, so thank you for your long commute. So I have a couple of public service announcements this morning. The first one is the Calvert County Fair starts next week. The first fair was held in eighteen eighty-six. I wasn't there, just beat you to the punch.
I heard he was.
He didn't make it to eighteen eighty-seven.
He was working the year before.
Always. And we have a representative from the fair today, Ms. Ashley Wilkerson. I guess I've already introduced you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ashley Wilkerson, and I'm a director on the Calvert County Fair Board. I'm here today to present the books and let everyone know that the Calvert County Fair will be opening Wednesday, September twenty-seventh through Sunday, October first. We do have some pre-fair events. On Sunday, September twenty-fourth, our Miss Tranquility and Lord Calvert Contest will be at two P.M. Entry day is the twenty-fifth. Adult times to enter is eleven A.M. to seven P.M., and children's is eleven A.M. to eight P.M., so they get an extra hour. This year, our fair has some great entertainment, which is a daredevil aerial acrobatic thrill show, a transforming robotic car called the Big B. We have chainsaw carvings by Joe Stebing, Jr., and we'll have the Maryland Agricultural Showcase trailer, as well as a natural play place for children to come and play for free.
And a livestock auction on Saturday night.
Yes, way to keep on... See, you're more on it than me. That's great.
Come with your checkbook, that's all we ask.
I'll already be there.
Just keep raising your hand. Just raise your hand. Let everybody know you're there.
If you don't know what to do, sit right here. I'll tell you what to do. But we do want to thank all the volunteers. Most may... People may not know that the fair is run by a group of volunteers. It's quite a task to put on a fair, and we want to thank them for continuing this great tradition and want to invite everybody to come out. Friday is Children's Day, right? So usually, that's a pretty exciting day. Yeah, we're hoping for good weather. Can rain on Tuesday and rain on Monday, just not in between.
St. Mary's County can have the rain this week.
And it is fair season. If you're... Don't have anything to do this weekend, St. Mary's County Fair is going on right now, and it's a good fair, too, but, you know, it's not Calvert. So we just want to make sure everybody is aware that the fair's coming up and thank all of you for your great work, and don't forget Saturday night, checks or cash. The other thing on my list is September's National Suicide Prevention Month. I think we're going to do a proclamation a little later, and today is also National Voter Registration Day. You know, it's very important in this country. So many of our citizens have given up their lives in our history to make sure you have the right to vote, and it's very sad when we see some of the turnout at elections. So today is just a day to highlight, you know, you should, if you have not already, please register to vote, and when the time comes, make sure you inform yourself and you make an educated decision and vote for those individuals that you think will do the best job to represent you. So, and I believe that's all I have today.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
I motion a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the first item on the agenda is proclamations, and we have a little retirement to do today.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Hart.
Extremely jealous because everybody retires but me. I haven't figured that out yet. Randy, would you like to come on up, sir?
Where?
That's proof he's already retired.
Good morning, how are you, sir? See, you're already there. What island are you already on there, you know? Yeah, come on up, come on up. Well, good morning. Was there anybody here with you today that you'd like to bring on up?
My wife.
Come on up, come on up.
My two daughters, my granddaughter, my son-in-law, and my pastor.
I say, coming up for the...
Come on up.
Walk into the mic, see who you are, and then come on up.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
Yes.
I am Mrs. Gray. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
God bless you.
I'm Ananda.
Good morning, I'm Jasmine, the oldest granddaughter.
See, soon you won't say that, though. When you're my age, you go, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm Kelly, the youngest daughter. And I am Dasha, the oldest daughter.
Up, Frankie, your son-in-law.
Good morning, Kevin Jackson, Randy's pastor.
Good morning, sir. Good morning.
I can tell there's some competition in that house. I can see that. Yeah, so, well, we thank you so much, and all of you folks coming here today. Like I say, I don't know why I haven't retired yet. I did say they were sizing up a box for me, so I didn't know if that's when my retirement date was or not. I don't know, so... But we are very happy and thankful that you have spent your career here with us, and in appreciation, want to read you this proclamation. It says, "Whereas Randall Randy Gray, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker Two for the Department of Public Works and Buildings and Grounds Division, retired on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three after dedicating thirty-five years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. Whereas Randy's admiral career began on November thirty, nineteen eighty-seven, as a correctional officer for the Calvert County Detention Center. He was promoted to Correctional Officer Two on December nineteenth, nineteen eighty-eight, then to Correctional Officer First Class on July twelfth, nineteen ninety-three. Randy started his position with Buildings and Grounds Division on November thirty, nineteen ninety-eight as a Buildings and Grounds Worker One and was promoted to Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker Two on June twenty-five, two thousand eighteen. Throughout his career, Randy has provided reliable and excellent service, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, admiration from Calvert County citizens and fellow constituents who have had the pleasure to work with him. Whereas Randy's commendable distinguished service has been demonstrated with the spirit of pride and commitment through his exemplary career, the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert presents this proclamation as a tribute to Randy's outstanding accomplishments during his distinguished career, thereby recognizing this amazing man who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calvert County citizens. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Randall Randy Gray on his retirement after thirty-five years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County join the community as coworkers, family, and friends for conveying the best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all future endeavors given under our hands and seal this nineteenth day of December twenty-third. Sign off all five county commissioners." I said to Steve Weems, we grew up together, you know, I said, "Who's this guy that checks on us all the time? He says, 'That's Randy.'" And every Tuesday, he'd peek his head in the door, make sure everything was okay, and it's really cool. It's old-school kind of stuff, you know, and thank you, thank you so much for that.
Look, Commissioner Hart, in nineteen ninety-three, I started my career at the jail. I walked into control room, and Randy Gray was my first FTO, like Field Training Officer in the detention center. I appreciate all you've done for the county, Randy, I really do.
I think we have a few people.
Randy, if I could just say a few words. Bob Harvey, State's Attorney. On behalf of all of the employees here at the courthouse, I want to thank you for everything you've done. I do want to know, however, where did all these lovely young ladies come in? What a beautiful, beautiful... And you too, sir, what a beautiful... What a beautiful family. You are so blessed. I can see now why you retired. What took you so long? Thirty-five years. Randy, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I'm pleased to be able to say I consider you to be a friend, and that's the highest honor I think we can bestow on each other, so thanks again for everything you've done. Congratulations.
Tom Jones, Deputy Director for DPW of General Services. Randy and I had the pleasure of working together for the last six years. As Mr. Harvey just stated, he's an outstanding gentleman, can work every day, did his job, was a great guy, great employee. On behalf of the past leaders and supervisors of General Services and the ones that are here today, congratulations on your retirement, your thirty-five years. Yep.
Good morning, my name is Mark Chanley. I'm the Circuit Court Administrative Judge here for Calvert County. I just want to thank Randy. So ten years ago, I got on the bench. Randy was probably one of the first people I saw. He greeted me, and ever since then, we've become fast friends. He is probably the epitome of Calvert County. He wants to help people, he likes to get things done, and we've, on behalf of the courthouse, as Mr. Harvey said, he was probably one of the most important people that we relied on, and he was always did everything with a smile, and it's... He did such a great job. We really appreciate everything you've done for us, Randy. Thank you. He's my buddy, too, so...
Mark Willis, County Administrator. I was thinking that the chief judge was going to tell a little bit more about that story. When Tom Jones took over Buildings and Grounds, he, like every other department head or deputy director, they look at the staffing and they say, "Well, let me move it around so that it benefits the entire county." And he told me that Randy was going to be reassigned somewhere, and I got a call from a particular judge, no particular, not mentioned. He said, "Mark, can we work this out?" And I said, "Sir, what's the problem?" He said, "Well, you know, Randy does such a good job for us, and Randy's like a constant in our lives," right? So he said, "I would rather that Randy be able to just finish out, you know, here at the courthouse." And I called Tom Jones and says, "Tom, I got a call from the judge." I said, "We want to look at how we can keep Randy in his place until later on." And he goes, "But I really have these ideas." I said, "Did I not tell you who just called me? What part of that did you not get?" And, you know, Randy's never let us down, and just like they say, yes, he pokes his head in here every Tuesday, he pokes his head in every office every day, and if he doesn't, we're like, "Okay, somebody call Burgess," so we got to track Randy down. So it's been a pleasure, Randy. Thank you.
I'd like to take a few minutes to say something. Randy has been in my life since nineteen ninety-one, when I started detention there, detentions there like Mr. Ireland. He was the sharpest cat in the uniform. Everybody looked up to him. He was my mentor there, and he was my mentor here. Thank you for coming to my life, bringing your family into my life. We'll be long-lasting friends, and I wish you well in your retirement. Thank you.
Wonderful. It's your turn. So many people have so many nice things, I don't want to take away their moments.
Normally, we have to say squeeze in, but this is all family.
Can everyone see the camera from one side? Three, two, one. Congratulations on the time. Thanks so much. Can I get one for the family? Thank you.
Man, I hope he doesn't run for Commissioner-at-Large.
Then we'll have another retirement.
And there won't be so many nice things we can say.
No, no. I'm like, "Is there anybody here? Check the parking lot."
So the next item on the agenda is another retire... Wait a minute, we just hired this guy. Another retirement, Commissioner Ireland.
All right, Dave McDowell, if you'd come forward, please.
See if he's a bunch of pretty women coming up for you. So May, Dave decided he was going to retire from the sheriff's office. I worked with Dave for twenty-six, twenty-seven years at the sheriff's office. He and I, at promotion time, would always study together. We spent hours and hours and hours, I guess firing thousands and thousands of questions at each other to prepare for promotional exams. It was definitely time well spent, but the only problem was he would always come out number one, and I would always come out number two.
There's a reason for that, though, Sheriff.
But we continue to, like I said, progress through the ranks together, sheriff's office. I stopped the captain, Dave went on to be major and lieutenant colonel. He was the assistant sheriff for however many years. I'm sure it's spelled out here in the proclamation, I'm going to read to you with all the other facts. But I consider Dave to be a good friend. Like I said, we spent a lot of time together, and Dave had quite an accomplished career. You want to introduce yourself? Head to back to Mike.
My name is Dave McDowell, and I am honored to be here for this proclamation this morning, and I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for doing that. I want to thank my public safety family for being here, my brothers in the back of the room from the sheriff's office for being here, and, man, time flies. That's all I can tell you, time flies, and it's been great. Calvert County opened its doors to me in nineteen eighty-seven, and I've been grateful ever since, and the opportunity to still be here and serving in county government, I just can't put a value on it. So thank you all for being here for this today, I really do appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Patrick Dave McDowell, former Assistant Sheriff of Calvert County, retired on May fifth, two thousand twenty-three after honorably serving Calvert County with twenty-seven years of dedicated service. And whereas on April twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-six, Dave began his admiral career as Deputy Sheriff to Calvert County Sheriff's Office. Dave was promoted to the Supervisor of Rank of Corporal in two thousand one, and has held every rank, including that of Lieutenant Colonel in the Sheriff's Office chain of command. In two thousand thirteen, Dave was sworn in in the Assistant Sheriff position for nearly ten years before stepping down as Assistant Sheriff and retiring in two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Dave's dedicated service and contributions have been demonstrated with pride throughout his commendable career with the sheriff's office. He served in the Patrol Bureau as a patrol deputy, later becoming the Patrol Bureau Commander. He then served in the Criminal Investigation Bureau as a general assignment investigator, sex crimes investigator, hostage negotiator, and child abuse investigator. Dave was the sheriff's office's first dedicated criminal intelligence investigator responding to the counties, then emerging presence of outlaw motorcycle gangs. Dave is particularly proud of his time as sergeant assigned to the K-9 unit. He and a group of deputies built the foundation for what is now one of the most respected units in the state of Maryland, drawing in surrounding departments to train their K-9 units in Calvert County. And whereas Dave's service extended beyond his law enforcement role, he's a founding member of the Prescription Drug Abuse and Abatement Council, a multidisciplinary board assembled to address prescription drug abuse in Calvert County, and served as a member of Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse Board of Directors. Dave has also been a criminal justice professor with the College of Southern Maryland for over fifteen years, and is credited with recruiting many students to the sheriff's office. Dave served as a member of the Board of Directors of the Maryland Sheriff's Association, as well as a member of the Legislative Committee, where he drafted and presented legislation and contributed not only to the safety of Calvert County, but to the entire state of Maryland. Dave also takes great pride in participating in numerous Eagle Scout and Girl Scout Gold Award ceremonies and meeting with high school criminal justice students to set a positive example for future generations. And whereas, it is without question that Dave has served the citizens of Calvert County with the utmost care, understanding, and integrity. His dedication to public service has left a long-lasting mark on Calvert County, and we are forever grateful for his service. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that congratulations are hereby extended to Dave McDowell on his retirement from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office after twenty-seven years of dedicated and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community, Dave's coworkers, family, and friends in extending his best wishes and continued success in all his future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this nineteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-three.
Had to say it at least once. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Come on, now you guys know me by now.
I just want everybody to know that Tom would have come out number one had he not gotten up every thirty minutes to shoot a deer out the window.
Hope the statute of limitations is up.
That's funny.
Next item on the agenda is Suicide Prevention Month proclamation. Commissioner Cox.
Jennifer, can you come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources, and joining me today is our substance abuse clinical supervisor, Pam Pierce, who's going to talk about Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and share some statistics and some important steps that we can take as family members and as individuals to prevent suicide.
Great, come on, come forward.
I prefer to stand. Thank you, commissioners, for having us this morning, for all of you who have not met me yet, but probably have met me in different venues. I appreciate you all being here and taking the time to listen to some of these concerns and statistics. I come to you today even more compelled to talk about suicide prevention because on August twenty-second, a very dear friend that I considered my brother for forty-six years died by suicide. He was a first responder, so this year, instead of talking about kids, I'd like to talk a little bit about first responders and veterans. When we look at our statistics, of course, we're a couple of years behind, right? Because we don't get big CDC statistics until about two or three years behind. So my latest statistics are two thousand twenty-one statistics, and I just want to say this because it's kind of, it's kind of like profound to me. Twelve point three million adults, twelve point three million adults seriously thought about suicide in two thousand twenty-one. Three point five million adults made a plan. That's big. And one point seven million adults attempted suicide. In two thousand twenty-one, we had forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-three people die by suicide. That's tough. That's a tough one to swallow. Now, let me break it down even more a little bit for you. I have to use my paper because I'm not just talking about children today, which is my kind of gig usually. So if we think about some violent and nonviolent deaths, okay? In Calvert County, Maryland, from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty, all nonviolent suicide deaths occurred in females. Now, when I say nonviolent, I mean things like taking an overdose, okay? Contrastingly, males represented eighty-eight percent of all suicide deaths. Now, when we think about our traditional veterans, and this is not to knock women who are veterans because they, too, fall in this category, when we think traditionally about the men in our county, hunters, right? We have a lot of guns. It's important. Gun ownership is important to a lot of people in this county. We have first responders, guns, they have very high awareness, they have safety about guns. We talk about veterans, awareness of guns, possession of guns, right? So it's a very, I feel really passionate about learning about mental health, guiding the way for people to talk about it more. There's no magic about suicide prevention. I was looking at the CDC plan, and I really liked it, and I'm just going to read the seven kind of major areas for prevention, and I think that this goes across the board. But this is about veterans, okay? And so now we're going to try to start to apply this even more for our first responders. Strength and economic supports. One of the largest risks for adults when they think about suicide is financial difficulty, financial strain, and we still live in this world where our males predominantly bring home the bacon. I mean, that's not to diss any woman who is working full-time, but our males, I mean, those are our highest populat... It's our highest population for suicide, males. Create protective environments. I'm looking at Todd Ireland, you know, and Dave McDowell, who just retired. You were in an environment of one of the highest risks for first offender, or first, I'm sorry, first responders for suicide. You're at a, you're like at a double risk than the average American, you know, male who's working in a business office. You're at a higher risk because of the things that you saw and you experienced. Improving access and delivery of suicide care. We need more training, more trained professionals, more trained peers. One of the big things about, that we'd like to see happen in for first responders is peer-to-peer counseling. It's been ranked very high, and peer group counseling, because I can sit here and talk to somebody who's a veteran about suicide statistics, right, and why they're at risk, but it may not make as big of an impact as somebody else like Mark, who has served time in the military and has that experience and that understanding about what that kind of environment, what those, what that culture brings. Promote healthy... of environment, what those, what that culture brings. Promote healthy connections, connecting people. Don't be afraid to talk about suicide. We still hold stigma. Many, many people hold stigma. You know, my friend who died, he was a first responder and a police officer. And unfortunately, in the county where he was, the sheriff said, "We don't honor people who die by suicide." How antiquated is that? If he hadn't been a sheriff, on the sheriff's team, he never would've had PTSD, right? So, we have so much more education to do. Teaching coping and problem solving. And that goes from parenting, so we know how to teach our little ones, so that when they become people in places like this, communities where, you know, we do have violence unfortunately, that they know how to problem solve. They know resiliency. They know what to do and who to turn to. Identifying and supporting people at risk. You know, I sit in my office some days and I think, "I wonder why my people have all canceled today," and the phone rings, or I get something on my computer that says, "Please help, I'm at the front desk," and I have somebody who's considering suicide. The last one that we had that I was pertinent on was a guy who was at the bridge. And he was a veteran, and he had some serious PTSD and was very delusional that day. And fortunately for him, we were able to dispatch some of our officers in St. Mary's County that were able to get him and, you know, take him to the hospital. Those were scary moments, very scary moments. And then, lessening the harms and future, preventing future risk. Reporting and messaging, it's a simple thing, where we put messages out to all populations, not just kids, youth, female. We do it across the board. And we include sort of those niche, little populations in small counties, like our veterans, our homeless, our first responders. I mean, these are important people. They've served our time. So, I just wanted to bring that home a little bit today. We do have services in Calver County. We have Calver County Behavioral Health, where we try to meet with anybody who is struggling with anything. And if it's not appropriate for somebody to get therapy, okay, we can, I can call Jen Moreland and say, "What's the best, what's the best resource for this person," right? Come one, come all, you know, any kind of issue that's happening. We have 988 now. That's our suicide hotline. We also have Calver Crisis Response. It's part of our Calver County Behavioral Health. 1-877-467-5628, 24/7. Somebody's gonna answer the phone and be able to talk and try to dispatch. So, we're building out services more and more. We're trying to come to people. We have people going into the woods on electric bikes now, you know? It's kind of like, we're trying to get as innovative and effective as we can be. The population is here. We're not invulnerable to anything. So, I appreciate you taking the time to recognize this month.
Very well said, Pam. Come on forward with me, please. As Pam said, it's a tough conversation for all. You know, we're talking about suicide, we're talking about mental health, but there is pathways forward. And I think we all need to engage in the conversation. Because like I said, it's a population of everybody that's, like I said, conversations that we do need to have. So, thank you for all your work and all you do, Jennifer, you too. So, I do have a proclamation today, and it reads as this. Whereas, suicide is a leading cause of death among all age groups, and is the third-leading cause of death among individuals ages 10 through 34 in Maryland. And whereas, it's estimated that from 2020 to 2022, suicide deaths rose by 7.6% in the United States. And whereas, the Center for Disease Control has reported 620 people died from suicide in Maryland in 2021. And whereas, over 90% of the people who died by suicide have been diagnosed in treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas, organizations such as Maryland Suicide Prevention, Early Intervention Network, the Governor's Commission on Suicide Convention, and the Calver County Health Department resolves to integrate and coordinate suicide prevention activities across multiple sectors and settings, develop and implement strategies to improve access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services, advocate for ending the disparities in access to mental health care, and representative groups acknowledge that no single suicide prevention effort will be appropriate for all population and communities, and promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide, and that suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with mental health conditions. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of September, 2023 be known as Suicide Prevention Month in Calver County, and urge all residents to recognize that suicide is a public health issue, which everybody has a responsibility to acknowledge and prevent. Be it further proclaimed by that, by this action, the Board of County Commissioners commends all organizations for providing superior initiative, leadership, support, and commitment in their daily valuable contributions to suicide prevention. Given us under our hands and seal this 19th day of September, 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you for what you do.
That's a tough one to follow. And I do believe that we owe it to our fellow mankind to look out for each other, because I don't think anybody escapes knowing, loving someone who has depression and has suicidal thoughts. So, thank you very much for all that you do. Okay, Constitution of the United States, greatest document ever written. Do we have Carol Ruckert? You wanna introduce yourselves?
Yes, Carol Ruckert. I'm the Vice Regent for the John Hanson Chapter of the DAR.
And I'm Lori McBriarty, the Regent of the John Hanson Chapter of the DAR. And we wanted to thank the Commissioners and Calver County for recognizing this important week. As you said, the Constitution is the most important document in the United States, and we think it demonstrates the tenacity of Americans to really focus on their freedoms, liberties, and inalienable rights. So, thank you so much.
Thank you both. You wanna come on up, please?
You don't have to.
Well, my husband fusses with me all the time because I'm not a Hanson. I wasn't born in this county, but the Emreys in Centerville and Ken Island had a land grant from the 1600s, and that's my family. And my husband says, "You have got to pursue this and become certified." Is that what you would call it, certified?
That's right.
Yes.
A member, document your history, all your history back to the revolution.
Yes.
You do have help.
We welcome anybody to come and join us, and we'll help you find your answer.
Okay, I know where they are. I know where the family home is.
Just a matter of getting the documentation.
There you go. There you go. Well, thank you, ladies, for being here today. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. And whereas, the mission of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution is to promote historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And whereas, the John Hanson Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, promotes these principles in our community through participation in citizenship and patriotic events. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2023 be known as Constitution Week. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we urge all citizens to study the U.S. Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American, with all the rights and responsibility that privilege involves. Given under our hands and seal this 19th day of September, 2023, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Did you get that straight?
I sure did.
Sounds like you're making a date. So, that brings us to a scheduled public hearing. Department of Community Resources, budget amendment for grant funding of the Twin Beaches Library. Director Wilson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Wilson, Executive Director of Calvert Library. I'll start with a memo, which is the budget adjustment for grant funding for the Twin Beaches Library. Background, the Twin Beaches Library Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, was first adopted in fiscal year, or FY, 2019, for the concept design. The cost of the project has gradually increased each year as the design was developed and finalized. The project was bid in March of 2022. The lowest bid was $10,299,000. And the FY 2022 CIP budget allowed for an additional $364,400 in ad alternates, bringing the total contract to $10,663,400. Calvert Library Foundation is conducting a campaign to raise additional funds to pay for the finishing touches that are outside the scope of the projected budget. Discussion, the project has been awarded a total of $4,800,000 in state library capital grant funding over the period of FY 2020, FY 2022, and FY 2023. The most recent FY 2024 grant of $212,500 was increased by $641,500 due to cost escalations projected by the State Department of Budget and Management. This brings the total grant funding for the project to $5,654,000. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact is an increase in grant funding of $641,500 to the Twin Beaches CIP. Conclusion recommendation, staff requests the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing, accept public comments, and move to close the record and approve and adopt the resolution enacting budget amendment BA 2024-000069 to increase the FY 2024 Twin Beaches CIP by $641,500 from the library capital grant program. So, we'll move to the hearing. Today's hearing is for the purpose of opening the public record for public comment on budget amendment for the increased state grant funding to support the Twin Beaches Branch Library. The county has adopted guidelines for conducting public hearings as detailed in Resolution 6-89. This hearing will be executed in compliance with that resolution. Hearing has been advertised. Sign-in sheet has been provided for speakers and is located on the podium to the left behind me. At this time, I'll check to see if anyone has signed up to speak.
Mr. President, no one has signed up to speak. We do have one person on Zoom. If they would like to provide comment at this public hearing, please use the raise your hand function. His hand is raised. If you please identify yourself, whether speaking as the designated representative of a group or an individual.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Joseph Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself this morning. I wanna speak out in support of this adventure this morning. Funding our libraries is so important for our community, and the Twin Beaches account is my home library. And I've received books, movies, video games, movies on the beach, workshops, so many wonderful things that our library system puts in. So, all the support that we can give to them is only gonna improve our community, and I think it's the best use of our tax dollars. Thank you so much.
That is the only speaker.
Thank you. At this time, we ask you to close the record, approve, adopt, and enact the resolution enacting budget amendment BA 2024-000069 to increase the FY 2024 Twin Beaches CIP by $641,500 from the library capital grant program.
Mr. President. So, I do have one question. Is this $641,000 going to complete the project, or, so that will complete the project?
Yeah. And ideally, we'll give money back.
Okay. And how about raising additional funds? How much additional funds would you need to, I heard that was interior?
We, our goal is to raise about $350,000 for this project, and we've raised about $300,000. So, that'll go to things like the podcast and STEM equipment and things like that.
Thank you.
And what's your estimated opening?
We are hoping for a March-ish, mid to late March-ish opening to the public ribbon cutting.
Excellent. Commissioner Arland, do you have a motion?
Sure. I move that we close the record and approve and adopt the resolution enacting budget amendment number BA 2024-69CIP.
Second?
I have motion of second, that we record, approve, and adopt the resolution enacting budget amendment BA 2024-69CIP. So, any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. That brings us to awards. Our first award is the Employee Recognition Committee. Ms. Pliktam, how are you today?
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good.
Commissioners, Amalia Pliktam, here with the Employee Recognition Committee, here to introduce the August Employee of the Month. Employee of the Month acknowledges superior job performance and effective public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions toward organizational morale, or actions that improve the county's public image. Anyone other than an ERC member can nominate a coworker. The forms are on our webpage, and we appreciate your continued support of the ERC. Our August 2023 Employee of the Month is Arian Odom, our local care team coordinator. For folks who don't know, our local care team takes care of children with intensive needs. They work to ensure that they're preventing out-of-home placements. Arian, you are such a strong candidate that you received four additional letters of support from your counterparts, both within the county and at the state level, which made my job much easier, because I'm just gonna read their exact words. She is an extraordinary woman who has consistently and diligently worked for families of Calver County. Her interactions with families are compassionate and empathetic. She has a vibrant energy and sees each child and their family as a unique system with their own needs. She doesn't compare or minimalize. Arian keeps the LCT focused on assisting families who feel ready to give up. She is able to hold the space to allow families time to reflect on their own needs. The care and connection Ms. Odom demonstrates with the LCT families is without question. It is a masterclass in caring for others. It is clear that you positively impact the families in Calvert County and your coworkers, and you make this world a better place. It is an honor for the ERC to present you the August Employee of the Month award, and I think there are other people who would like to say some words on your behalf.
Okay, I'm tearing up. Our local care team coordinator should be someone who is experienced in child, youth, and family-serving systems. With Arian, we struck gold. Like, when you have a great hire, I'm telling you, there's nothing like that. We did good. She's worked in so many settings, from youth development, mental health, criminal justice, you name it. And because she has that history, she navigates these challenges families experience with such expertise but also empathy, which is really important. She knows how to lead people to a place where they make the right connections and they become better problem solvers themselves. Arian started right before COVID-19, and with COVID-19, we saw an increase in mental health issues, as we've talked many times about. She quickly adapted that local care team to work even better in a virtual setting, and that was safer and more flexible for families and providers. Arian also coordinates the, like, one hundred and seventy-five-member-plus interagency council for our county. These are all these nonprofit and government-serving agencies that meet monthly, and so she facilitates this network and resource sharing on a monthly basis. And in our office, Arian takes care of our staff. She takes on the unofficial role of planner of birthdays and holidays, which I'm going to tell you, that's important. She's such a treasure to our department, and I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to honor her alongside my colleagues today.
Congratulations.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Julie Machino. I'm the coordinator for the family network. Aside from celebrating Arian today as the Employee of the Month, she's also celebrating four years of employment with the county. So for the last four years, Arian and I Arian and I have shared an office for thirty-five hours a week for the last four years, and you really get to know somebody. So I love working with Arian. She's a fantastic colleague, and I am just so fortunate to get to know her personally, and she's made such an impact on so many families in our community. We are truly grateful for her service. So thank you for acknowledging her and all her accomplishments.
Wonderful. Why don't you come on up?
Hey, Arian, Employee of the Month, August two thousand and twenty-three, presented this twelfth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Board of County Commissioners, signed by all county commissioners. Thank you very much for all that you do, and most importantly, your check.
She said it was most important. It doesn't need to be important. This is going on Facebook, so. Wish your heart could be a little... Smile. Smile. Congratulations. Commissioners, I just also want to acknowledge that we have some of our local care team members that came today to recognize Arian, and if you can stand up real quick, our local care team.
I also get to introduce a Team Excellence Award today. Teams, Team Excellence Awards acknowledge employees who have excelled as a group displaying cooperation and teamwork to support a common goal and producing exemplary results. Today, we're recognizing four Parks and Recreation staff. Please step forward when I call your name. Brian Sunderland, Leonard Goddard, Mark Long, and Dylan Roberts.
Oh, so you guys can come right on up front. Oh.
Congratulations.
This team exemplifies coworkers who can be given the ball and carry it right across the finish line, and that's a fabulous quality to have among coworkers. They worked together to add a new recreational amenity at the Southern Community Center and performed it all in-house. This collaborative effort encompassed the planning, design, procurement of materials, site prep, erosion control, and construction of the swing set, replete with an accessible pathway for children of all abilities to access this new amenity. This team demonstrated skilled craftsmanship, working with custom-cut timbers during the hottest part of the year. And beyond technical skills, they truly demonstrated teamwork by identifying and using each member's strengths and embracing strong communication skills. This paid off. They got the whole project done within two months, and they saved the county between twelve to fifteen thousand dollars because they didn't have to hire a contractor. So these men exemplify teamwork. The ERC is delighted to join the B O C C in recognizing this team for a Team Excellence Award, and I think there are a few members of the audience who'd like to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Brann, I'm Deputy Director with Parks and Recreation. Director Nizal had to step away, and Division Chief Stillwagon is at home, as you guys know, recovering from surgery, so you're stuck with me this morning. That being said, I spoke with both Shannon and Amanda, and we share the same sentiment. So we truly appreciate, and we want to express our sincere gratitude for what you do, not only in building this playground, but for what you do each and every day to keep our parks beautiful and playable. So this is a very well-deserved award. We truly appreciate everything that you do day in and day out, not just through this award. So thank you very much.
Good morning. Paul Lundberg, Parks and Recreation. I wanted to say thank you, as someone who works at Southern Community Center every day. It's not just a swing set, it's a reason for people to visit. So you'd be amazed, last week I saw adults using the swing set. So it really is an important thing. I thank you, as Bob said, for the work that you do every day. They support our programs at Cove Point Park, Solomonstown Center Park, Dow House. So privileged to work with you. All of Parks and Recreation divisions are represented today, so we really think that you represent all of us and do it very, very well. So thank you.
Perfect. I have to sketched out a little bit this way. There we go. Then I have to squish and...
Do you mind if I scooch or squish?
Scooch. That's not one. Anyway. Smile. Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Congratulations. Thank you.
We hope so, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
And we have a second Team Excellence Award today. The ERC is privileged to recognize four community resource staff members. The Aging Service Case Manager, oops, sorry. Please come forward as I call your name. First are the Aging Services Case Managers, Teri Gunkel, sorry, Amanda Seymour, Kimberly Phillips, and Jean Mueble. Yeah, there are. We also have Angley Brinkley and Jean, and I'm sorry. Rochelle Butler. This team really performs essential work. They care for our community members as they age. These dedicated and compassionate colleagues visit clients in their homes, or in the case of someone who is without a home at that moment, wherever that person is currently located. They also support persons with disabilities from birth to death. Each case manager assesses their client's needs, links them to available resources, and provides help in a multitude of ways. Many of these cases involve complex issues, hoarding situations, substance abuse, mental health issues, homelessness, and family dysfunction. Through patience, understanding, and experience, this team manages each case to promote the best possible outcome for the individual. These dedicated workers often go unnoticed and unappreciated as they work behind the scenes. They assure that our most vulnerable citizens receive services and care that they need and deserve. They're not doing easy work, yet they do it with patience and kindness. Simply while scheduling this award, it was clear to me how passionate this team is about their work. It's clear that they feel honored to provide these services for the community, and it's important work, and it really is appreciated. They understand the importance of the work and embrace this challenge, and that is why it is a delight and honor of the ERC to present this award to you today. And I think we have some members of the audience.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Sullivan, Division Chief of the Calvert County Office on Aging and Community Resources. We want to thank you for your support of this. Thank the ERC for acknowledging our wonderful staff in front of you, Angelise, Kim, Jean, Amanda, Teri, and Rochelle. As you know, we have a couple of homeless case managers who work with the elderly who are unfortunately homeless, and we have found housing for some of our homeless. We have helped individuals, the wonderful folks in front of you, to stay in their homes longer, to provide in-home health care. These staff members do a wonderful job each and every day. Well, certainly, we don't do it in a vacuum. We understand that we serve alongside many other individuals in the community, many partnering agencies. We want to thank them. But Commissioners, thank you for your continued support, because without your support, we cannot do what we do, and we understand that very much. So we appreciate your support, and thanks to our Director, Jennifer Morland, for leading the way. Thank you for recognizing our team. We appreciate it very much. Have a good day.
I'm very short. Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to say I feel honored to lead this team of wonderful case managers. They do say that a good case manager is empathetic, caring, and has strong relationship-building skills, and I can say without hesitation that each of these wonderful ladies have all of those skills. So thank you. Thank all of you.
Go scooching and squishing, I think.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
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 The same thing. I did that. I bet you can't take me nowhere.
Thank you.
You have a great day. Congratulations. Sorry. My house is in...
That brings us to old business. Item one, up's the county attorney. Mr. County Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Norris, County Attorney.
Good morning.
Read the memo. Background: Concerns began to arise when the Maryland Department of Legislative Services reported on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Quote, "Our audit disclosed that Calvert County Public Schools' procurement policies were not sufficiently comprehensive and were not always consistently used when obtaining goods and services under intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements. Furthermore, we found that certain components of the payments to bus contractors did not reflect actual costs or could not be supported. Our audit also disclosed that CCPS needs to improve internal controls and accountability in certain areas, including payroll processing, information systems, healthcare claims, and fee processing. Finally, based on our current audit assessment of significance and risk to our audit objectives, our audit included review to determine the status of eight of the twelve findings contained in our preceding audit report. CCPS, Calvert County Public Schools, satisfactorily addressed two of the eight prior findings we reviewed. The remaining six findings are repeated in this report," end quote. Board of County Commissioners has authority to order a performance audit of the practices of the Calvert County Board of Education. Performance audit means an assessment of the practices to determine whether an entity or program is operating economically and efficiently, and whether corrective actions are appropriate. A request was made for the Board of Ed to agree to performance audit on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The joint meeting was then held at the request of the Board of Education on July thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, and the Board of County Commissioners transmitted its proposed scope of work for such an audit on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as requested by the Board of Education at the July meeting. The Board of Ed has not yet agreed. Discussion: Additional concerns have arisen regarding transparency in the procurement practices of the Board of Education. The Public Information Act Compliance Board found by decision dated September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, that the Board of Education improperly denied review of its budget request. Then the article, "Some Maryland School Expenses, Big and Small Remain a Mystery," reported, quote, "In Calvert County School District, officials haven't been just buying school supplies, textbooks, and computers. They've been buying wristwatches, too. The district spent over twenty-five thousand dollars at a locally-owned jewelry store in Prince Frederick in two thousand and twenty-one. Upon inquiry to the director that compiled the story that was published in the Daily Record on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, conveyed that twenty-five thousand dollar expense at a jewelry store really stood out. The substantial delays incurred thus far severely impact the ability for the performance audit to inform your consideration, the Board of County Commissioners' consideration, of the Board of Education's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget request, which we anticipate in March of two thousand and twenty-four. Direction is sought with continuing delays experienced and seeking concurrence." Fiscal impact: Cost of an audit would be shared equally between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education as prescribed by Maryland Annotated Code, Education Article five dash one ten D. Conclusion and recommendation: The Board is asked to approve submitting the work, the scope of work and task list for a performance audit to the State Board of Education for it to order a performance audit with such phasing as necessary to begin receiving feedback in February of two thousand and twenty-four. To that end, we've also prepared a resolution for the Board to consider that sets forth the scope of work and the budget. Scope of work includes comparative analysis of the findings of the Financial Management Practices Audit Report, January twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-two, to A, current practice at the board, at the Calvert County Public Schools, B, peer jurisdictions, and C, to industry...
when the Maryland Department of Legislative Services reported on January 25, 2022. Our audit disclosed that Calver County Public Schools procurement policies were not sufficiently comprehensive and were not always consistently used when obtaining goods and services under intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements. Furthermore, we found that certain components of the payments to bus contractors did not reflect actual costs or could not be supported. Our audit also disclosed that CCPS needs to improve internal controls and accountability in certain areas, including payroll processing, information systems, healthcare claims, and fee processing. Finally, based on our current audit assessment of significance and risk to our audit objectives, our audit included review to determine the status of eight of the 12 findings contained in our preceding audit report. CCPS, Calver County Public Schools, satisfactorily addressed two of the eight prior findings we reviewed. The remaining six findings are repeated in this report. Board of County Commissioners has authority to order a performance audit of the practices of the Calver County Board of Education. Performance audit means an assessment of the practices to determine whether an entity or program is operating economically and efficiently and whether corrective actions are appropriate. A request was made for the Board of Ed to agree to performance audit on March 28, 2023. The joint meeting was then held at the request of the Board of Education on July 31, 2023. And the Board of County Commissioners transmitted its proposed scope of work for such an audit on August 8, 2023, as requested by the Board of Education at the July meeting. The Board of Ed has not yet agreed. Discussion. Additional concerns have arisen regarding transparency and the procurement practices of the Board of Education. The Public Information Act Compliance Board found by decision dated September 6, 2023 that the Board of Education improperly denied review of its budget request. Then the article, "Some Maryland School Expenses, Big and Small Remain a Mystery", reported, quote, "In Calver County School District, officials haven't been just buying school supplies, textbooks, and computers. They've been buying wristwatches, too. The district spent over $25,000 at a locally-owned jewelry store in Prince Frederick in 2021." Upon inquiry to the director that compiled the story that was published in the Daily Record on August 24, 2023, conveyed that $25,000 expense at a jewelry store really stood out. The substantial delays incurred thus far severely impact the ability for the performance audit to inform your consideration, the Board of County Commissioners' consideration of the Board of Education's fiscal year 2025 budget request, which we anticipate in March of 2024. Direction is sought with continuing delays experienced and seeking concurrence. Fiscal impact. Cost of an audit would be shared equally between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education as prescribed by Maryland Annotated Code, Education Article 5-110D. Conclusion and recommendation. The Board is asked to approve submitting the work, the scope of work and task list for a performance audit to the State Board of Education for it to order a performance audit with such phasing as necessary to begin receiving feedback in February of 2024. To that end, we've also prepared a resolution for the Board to consider that sets forth the scope of work and the budget. Scope of work includes comparative analysis of the findings of the Financial Management Practices Audit Report, January 25, 2022, to, A, current practice at the Calver County Public Schools; B, peer jurisdictions; and C, to industry standards and best practices and make recommendations for corrective action, recommended enhancements or improvements. And item number two, identification of potential efficiencies or procedures that would lead to cost savings in all direct procurements. The resolution sets forth a recommended budget of $200,000 to be paid in accordance with 5-110D of the Education Article of the Maryland Annotated Code, and asks for a bid additive alternate that includes preparation of a comparative analysis of current practices to peer jurisdictions, industry standards, and best practices, and make recommend corrective action or improvements where applicable in the governance structure, central office organization, and the financial management, human resources, and information technology functions of the school system, and to make recommendations for improving the efficiency and effectiveness of operations. So is a bid add alternate, only if there was sufficient funds remaining from that $200,000, would that add alternate be considered for addition?
Thank you. Questions? Discussion?
Motion.
I do have some. So this performance audit was started way back when, and I just want to reiterate it. It's not to point fingers. You know, it's not to point wrongdoing. It's to bring experts in to identify how we can use money more efficient. You know, as Board Member Lisa Grennis said, if we can just save one or two percent, that's millions in the bank that we can spend on other resources for our kids. But then when I hear we must limit the scope of work, we must, you know, do this, do this. It just concerns me about, you know, we need to use the money the best we can for our kids. And that's all I got.
Anything else? Did you?
Go ahead.
All I was going to say basically is, so I'm going on year nine. I don't know why this is always the appearance of an adversarial relationship. I've been part of, hey, we need to meet and do this. We need to, you know. I have no adversarial bone in my body about any of this. I graduated from here. My daughter graduated from here. My son is in a school system. All I want, sincerely want, from us, from the school system, from anything, is to be the best we can be. That's really it. My ego stays at the door. There's nothing ego. If I make a mistake, I think it's been documented and many times I'll be the first to apologize. I think to Commissioner Cox's point, just wanting, what can we do to be better? I don't know why. And I'm telling you, after it comes from here, the Facebook stuff will start. Also, my 20%, as Commissioner Williams used to say, this is not adversarial. I don't think, I know more than anybody else. I'm a business guy. The smartest business people I know recognize what they don't do well, and they get people that do know how to do them. In my business, there's a lot I don't know how to do. But I have professional people that do them. And I am smart enough to recognize what I don't do well. So for my 20%, and we did a transportation study before. It was stone and trash. None of the advice was taken from it. It was pretty disheartening, because I thought they did a pretty thorough thing. I would at least like to have a discussion. I have the privilege of growing up here and know a lot of people in the transportation system that still aren't happy today. Whether they say it publicly or not, I don't know, but they say it to me. I think all of us can do better, can be better. And the way things change as fast as they do, trickling down, sometimes you need help. And that's what outside agencies are there to do. So for me personally, this is not some dagger or stone thrown or anything at all like that. And if this can help, I'm all about it.
We also have to take into consideration the blueprint. The blueprint has a very expensive number behind it. And if we can save costs to help with that and to help improve what we do for our children in the Calver County school system, I'm all for it. All of us can improve. All of us can do better.
One thing I want to say, these are taxpayer dollars that we approve annually for that budget. We need to be fiscally responsible. Without a doubt, that's what we're here for. A school board budget is by far the largest part of our budget annually. And if the return on investment from this performance audit is significant, this is merely the tip of the iceberg. We work down from there. That's all I have to say.
And I think at the last Board of Education meeting, there was discussion about, you know, us auditing ourselves. And I think we're going to do that. You know, I'm not scared of an audit. You know, I think, as Commissioner Rowland said, we have a fiscal responsibility to the citizens of Calver County. And if we do, when we do an audit of ourselves, if it finds that there are issues, then we're going to address those. I mean, I don't, you know. I just think it's a physically responsible thing to do. Hadn't been done, that I know of, in a long, long time. And just something that, you know, this board feels like needs to be done to make sure that. Because, you know, our budget is the largest it's ever been. The school board budget is the largest it's ever been. And it's not, it's not small numbers anymore. It's big numbers. And as Board Member Grennis said, if you can save 1%, it's a lot of, it's millions of dollars. When you look at the county budget, it's, you know, it's approaching $400 million. If we can save 1% of our own budget, that's $4 million. So I think that this is not personal. It's just financial for me.
Absolutely.
Well, we have a responsibility to use our constituents' monies wisely. And that's what we were elected to do, and that's what we're going to do. And if it means checking ourselves and finding where we can save money, that's what we'll do, because we are working for all of you.
Any other questions, discussions, motions?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve submission of the scope of work and task list for a performance audit to the State Board of Education for it to order a performance audit with such phasing as necessary to begin receiving feedback in February 2024.
Second.
That motion, the second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll present that resolution for the Board to signature at the close of your meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning, Purchase and Retirement Par Fund and TDR Reserve for fiscal year 2024. Good morning, Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Jen David, our Rural Planner. We're here today to set the price for the county's purchase of transferable development rights, or TDRs, through either our par fund, which is purchase and retirement, where the TDRs are reserved, or our reserve program, where we purchase TDRs and then resell them at the price that they're purchased. So I'm going to let Jen read through the memo. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Background. The Board of County Commissioners established the Purchase and Retirement Fund in 1992 to purchase, retire, and permanently remove transferable development rights, TDRs, from the development rights market, thereby protecting additional farmland acres from development. In 2021, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to establish a TDR bank pilot program, now known as the TDR Reserve. The TDR Reserve is a county-managed program that facilitates TDR sales between farmers and developers and acts as a revolving fund. In recent years, par has been funded by the combination of a small portion of the Maryland State Agricultural Transfer Tax dedicated to agricultural preservation and contributions from the county's general fund. In 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution also designating $1.70 of each $5 collected in recordation taxes to the Agricultural Land Preservation Fund to directly support land preservation efforts by the county. At this time, the land preservation budget does not include these funds. A budget adjustment is currently being prepared by the Department of Finance and Budget for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners to restore these funds. Until then, the available par funding comes solely from the prior year's par balance. There's currently $823,125 available for purchases to the TDR Reserve for fiscal year 2024. The Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board recommends a purchase price of $5,500 per TDR for the fiscal year 2024 par cycle and the TDR Reserve. The Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board assessed the TDR values when establishing the recommended price. There is a need to fairly compensate participants for the value of the land they have protected while also seeking to reach as many applicants as possible and utilize the available funding to its maximum potential. A maximum impact to the fiscal year 2024 budget shall be determined by the forthcoming budget adjustment. An impact of $1,674,011 is available in the current fiscal year 2024 budget. Conclusion. The Department of Planning and Zoning has requested that the Board of County Commissioners review, and if appropriate, consider the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board recommended purchase price for both programs, and direct staff to open the par cycle to receive applications and to continue with the TDR Reserve program. Attached to the memo, you should find a letter written on behalf of the Ag Preservation Board for the recommended purchase price of $5,500. If you wish, I'll read it into the record.
Sure.
Dear Commissioner Hans, Every year, the Board of County Commissioners sets the purchase and retirement price for the county's purchase of transferable development rights. The Commissioners consider recommendations from the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, APAB, and review recent market sales. But they are free to set the price at any amount they choose. The APAB requests Commissioners consider setting the price in advance of soliciting applications to allow potential applicants to make informed decisions when applying for the program. The APAB assessed TDR and land values when establishing their recommended par price. There is a need to fairly compensate participants for the value of the land they have protected while also reaching as many applicants as possible. The Board also seeks to increase participation and utilize the available funding to its maximum potential. The APAB feels that increasing the par price is fair after assessing and comparing land values and other active land preservation programs. With this in mind, the APAB respectfully recommends a purchase price of $5,500 per TDR for this cycle. The APAB recommends that the Board of County Commissioners purchase development rights from each applicant, starting with the highest-ranked application, and proceeding down the list as funding allows. Thank you for your continued support of land preservation. Signed by myself, Jennifer David, on behalf of Wilson V. Freeland, Chairman of the Ag Preservation Advisory Board.
So before we begin this discussion, I have to disclose that I own TDRs and may have to recuse myself.
So I have family that owns them. I may have to recuse myself as well.
And I have family members that own them also, and I may have to recuse myself.
So, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes. So as prescribed by the ethics ordinance, when the members, when a quorum of, or a majority of the members of a public body all have a conflict of interest, it instructs them to disclose their conflict, which you have just done on camera, and allows you then to proceed to vote.
And for the record, I have no intention of selling any TDRs.
And we don't either.
So, Mary Beth, I'd like to ask, so how's the program doing?
I think we did really well last year. And I'm sure Jen has the numbers, but the price that we purchased was $5,000 for the par program as well as the reserve. And the reserve's been working very well in the short time that it's been a program we've been buying and selling through that program.
As far as the par, how many have we done here recent?
So I've been with the county for two years. Last year, we sold 196.5 TDRs for a total value of $982,500. The prior year, I don't recall how many TDRs exactly, but we spent $657,000.
This is par, though, I'm talking about.
This is only par.
Okay.
That's right, only par. So this is only for the purchase and retirement program.
So when I first came on, all the different acronyms, TDR, what is that?
TDR is.
And it's a big, no, no, no. And it's a Big Apple. You cannot eat that apple in one bite. It's big. It's got history. And it is a lot, lot to learn. But what I have learned, sometimes the hard way, sometimes, you know, it is one of the best programs we've got on the street. And I have had countless, 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 countless talks with budget finance. All the discussions we have about water and sewer and traffic and everything, par addresses. It truly does. So I hope that we can make this even more successful. How many TDRs are still out there?
Approximately 4,000.
4,000?
And that's an approximate number.
How many of those have expressed consent, or, excuse me, interest in going into this par program?
So they are, to be clear, they already are in the program by owning the TDRs. So.
But par, I know, is different than just having TDRs on the market, because this actually retires them. This is my favorite of the two.
Right.
You know, by far.
So the TDR program is the name of the local county program as opposed to one of the other easement programs, state or federal easement programs. This is our local program. It's been the most popular. It's one of the most flexible of the three main programs, which would be Malifin Rural Legacy. And so that is one of the reasons that we do have a high, or have had a high participation rate in the past.
But of those 4,000, how many would like to participate in this par?
So that's a really hard question to get at. I'm not sure of that 4,000.
Well, why don't you talk about the survey?
I was just about to bring that up. So the other thing I wanted to bring up is in past years, we've had, and this has been quite a few years, too many people apply, and we weren't able to purchase all of them. But in the past two years, everyone who applied and qualified was able to, we were able to purchase their TDRs. And thank you, Mr. Hans. But what I was about to say was a survey was conducted in March of last year regarding the par program. Of that survey, we received 43 full responses to the program. Of that, 88% of the people who replied were somewhat familiar or very familiar with the program. Also, of that, of the folks who previously sold TDRs to the par program, approximately 57 had not, and 40% had. 54% would consider selling their TDRs to the par program in the future. I think that answers the question you were after. There was a variety, we offered a variety of responses to ask if they were not interested in selling to the program. What were the reasons? And based on the folks who responded, 41% did not have any TDRs to sell. They were probably APD owners that had sold all their TDRs previously, whether that was to the programs themselves, within our local preservation program, or privately. About 17% were holding on to their TDRs for estate purposes. And then 14% said that they were not interested in selling at the current price.
Those were the three largest percentages of the various responses we offered.
So, do we have someone that, that is, because a lot of times with things like this, paperwork, everything else, these are independent business folks a lot of times, or maybe doing other things, but, but time is, is crucial. Do we have somebody that works with them, walks them through the process, or even somebody that goes out to a lot of the agricultural events and is there as a informational source? Because I want to ma, to do everything we can to make this successful. I mean, is there anybody right now that goes, hey, if you could just buy them, it's here, but we don't have the funding? I mean, are we fully funded to take on everything that we need to do?
I, I was gonna say, absolutely. And Jennifer is that person.
Yes, I was about to say.
Yeah. I mean, if anybody calls, she walks them through, she explains all the different programs, certainly encourages, and then she's the one who takes it to the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board to, for them to consider. So, yeah, she is our, our voice to the, the farmers. And letters go out to every single TDR owner, letting them know what their share's price is, and, you know, to plead the application process, or to call Jennifer to ask her, you know, for help through the process.
So, if we have four thousand of them out there now, how many could you, not holding you to a number, could you see us obtaining, say, in the next year?
This year? So, you know, as I said, it was a hundred and ninety-six TDRs this year. I think it was in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and fifty last year. In some of the presentations I've looked through in the past in preparing materials for this board and other things, I think that a number of about two hundred would be ideal, probably the maximum you would be able to get in any given year, based on the conditions, what previous folks in my position have estimated.
So, so, obviously, there's, there's still a long way to go. I'm just twenty percent, but I would like to see us, I know there's, there's some folks that are just, they're not interested in selling, and that is fine. That is perfectly fine, because it still keeps it preserved. But, and if we could really dive down and get that exact number that is looking to, or maybe the schedule they plan in the future, make sure we work with them, because I would like to secure as many as humanly possible, because it's for the next generations. You know, I was teasing one of my coworkers earlier that I was driving a certain road, and there was this big piece of farm equipment, right? And I'm going slow behind it, and all I could think of is how cool this is, because fifty years ago, there was somebody doing the same exact thing. And I hope that fifty years from now, it's the same thing. You know, we're, we're seeing as, as our way of life keeps shrinking. You know, you see it in all these other jurisdictions, you know? They try to, to glory it up and make it sound so cool and it's so good for everybody, but you don't see any, you, you, you don't see anybody going, God, I just really want to go somewhere where it's congested. I just want to go somewhere where there's high crime. You know, if I could just go somewhere where it's not safe to walk outside. You don't see that, you know? And you know why folks want to come here, but preserving it is more important than all of it. So, I just, whatever we can do and can do, I want us to do.
So, I like your idea very much of, of doing more outreach to the community in the future.
They're, they're really helping future generations. It really, you know...
And I will tell you that one thing we've done this year, we've, with the budget adjustment, we put this together fairly quickly, but we have, I have asked CMR to have a reminder, media blasts go out partway through the, partway through the signup period, which we did not do last year. So, I'm hoping that that will also help attract...
We don't cut it off, do we? If somebody wants to jump in a program, we don't say, well, you gotta wait till June or wait till, it's open all year, right?
No, not this program. The par program is not open all year, it is not a continuous signup.
Is that a state thing?
The TDR Reserve is, no, it's not a...
Then we should change that. We should make it to whenever it's convenient, because, you know, they're the customer. So, we should make it to whenever it's convenient for them doing everything we can, you know, to secure that, and if it's a sit-down and talk, I mean, it's, it's just, it alleviates so many future problems.
So, Commissioner Hart almost gave staff a heart attack. You know, staff is trying to process applications, and I guess there are challenges, if they're coming in all year long, there's no cutoff to get the process completed. I think that, you know, what we try to do is advertise, make sure everybody knows, and we're on a routine now. Most people know, you know, every, this time of year, every year, there's gonna be a par offering, and that's what you do.
So, just to further talk about the TDR Reserve program, and, and I know that Mary Beth and I have been here before, the TDR Reserve program was set up as a bank, but within the resolution that created that program, there are provisions for if the, that it's possible for this body to retire TDRs out of that program. So, that is another, that is another option.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's good.
And that TDR Reserve program is open all year long, because of the way that that program is set up as, as a revolving fund. And so, that is an option, depending on what we see and how we see the program working, and if there's an imbalance between what's coming in and going out. So, those are options.
Well, if they get into financial hardship, I don't want to see them having to reach out to a builder.
Mm-huh.
You know, when there's a resource right here.
So, if we're not in the par cycle, they could sell through the TDR Reserve.
And how many do we have in that?
Right now, there's currently twenty-two TDRs sitting there that are available to be resold back out of the bank. Any day now, I should get another thirty-nine into the program for hovering around sixty. That program was set up with a, a certain value of money, and I have that figure here. So, the original budget that was set for that program was nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, based on last year's par price, if you sold those, if you sold TDRs for five thousand dollars and expended all of those funds, the bank would be purchasing a hundred and eighty-five TDRs. So, there is a limited amount of funding in that particular program. You're only going to have so many TDRs available.
Yes, ma'am.
The par cycle, how long a cycle is it?
It lasts all year. It basically tastes, takes us, oh, par.
Par.
Yes, par.
Par.
Par, the par cycle, it opens, depending on when we're, when we come to you to set the price, it's varied from year to year, but it's usually a couple of months that folks have to decide whether to apply, and then once they apply, we rank and process the applications. Then, the offers go back out to the individuals, and they work with their representative, their lawyer, their firm, to, to prepare the title work that needs to come in, to, that we're assured that they own the TDRs. And then, because of that work, there's back and forth. By the time the packages are approved, it's usually a few months later, all of the TDRs, the cycle wraps up at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth.
Okay. And how long do you leave it open for applications? A few months?
A few months. It's been longer or shorter over the various years, depending on a lot, when the budget comes out, and once the bu, we would prefer to have come to you in August, but with the budget as it is, we're coming to you now. This is about the same time as last year. We're anticipating a closing date of right before Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
When will the budget adjustment be completed?
I don't know the answer.
Soon, we hope. Finance and Budget is working on it, yes.
Because there, I think there's some other things in the works as well, so it's gonna need to be accessible.
Yes.
Thanks.
So, I think last year, after this hearing, we had a public comment from an individual didn't know what the TDR program was and why we were spending a million dollars, but Commissioner Hart alluded to the fact that it's, even I can do the math, that in the long run, county government is way ahead of the game to buy these TDRs and retire them as far as county government cost. We, we save money, we don't really spend money, you know, it's a short term.
You don't build sewage treatment facilities, you don't expand roads, you don't...
Schools.
Yeah, add officers, schools, teachers, it is...
So, for every five TDRs, we eliminate a house, for every three or under, we eliminate apartments and their own houses, so, you know, it's not hard math to figure out.
It's money well spent.
And if you'll forgive me, when I drive by our county roads, I see land that's left open to feed all the people in this nation and around the world. That's what I see.
Good point.
So, I don't think budget's gonna be an issue for the par fund.
No. I don't want to ever lose one because of that.
Are there any other questions, discussion?
No.
Motion?
This person, make a motion, I'm looking here, though. Make sure I don't leave anything out. Okay, um, make a motion for the, consider, excuse me, I still don't, okay, here we go, here we go, to direct staff to open, no, still on, where, I don't have that in mind.
Commissioner Earl, you have a motion for me?
Do you have it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you. I know, it's not, yeah.
I move that we approve APAB recommended, recommended purchase price for the par and TDR Reserve programs.
Second? I have a motion in a second, that we approve the Ag Preservation Advisory Board recommended purchase price for the par and TDR Reserve programs. Are there any, is there any discussion on that motion? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, one more thing, I was at a wedding Saturday, and a man said, "It was a pleasure working with you" on the purchase of his TDRs.
Well, thank you.
Who was that guy?
Well, I asked him if you paid him to say that. No, but he really did, he was very preservative, he said it was a great experience.
Well, thank you so very much.
Before you leave, we did, we keep talking about reopening the program, because the program's been closed now for...
Since twenty thirteen.
Ten years, yeah, ten years. And we do have people that ask me all the time that want to get in. And I know the Ag Advisory Board is working on reopening the program, and we're gonna keep bringing that up until you do, so...
I am well aware, and we are working hard.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Finance and Budget. So, it is a work session, it's just for informational purposes, there'll be no action taken today, just so everybody understands.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Bruce Miller, Finance Director, for the record. Real short, there's an anticipated funding deficit of approximately nine point two million dollars for the Northern Middle School replacement project and funding. I have Veronica, Veronica Atkinson will present information regarding, and then Shushida Warner from the Board of Education will present information also.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst. Background: The State of Maryland Interagency Commission on School Construction required a construction cost estimate that was prepared as part of the feasibility study process for Northern Middle School project. The construction cost estimate will require project phasing with the current Maryland Public School construction costs, as well as, totally off, with the current Maryland Public School construction costs, as well as future escalations. The projected total is sixty-five million. This is approximately nine point two million higher than the combined state and county construction allocation for the project. In response to the Northern Middle School feasibility study cost estimate, the Calvert County Board of Education, BOE, has begun the process of evaluating targeted reductions and strategies to better align the project's scope to the current budget. Additionally, BOE staff has identified a capital improvement project that is a systemic renovation project that can be deferred, and could allocate some of the project's county funds toward the Northern Middle School replacement project. So, basically, they've identified a systemic project that they'd like to defer and use that money towards the Northern Middle School replacement project. The BOE is requesting the transfer of the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from the Patuxent Elementary School Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Project, as well as the FY 2025 projected CIP of one million, two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. The BOE is requesting that the funds be incorporated into the FY 2025 budget for the replacement of Northern Middle School. Discussion: The BOE and Department of Finance and Budget are requesting that the Patuxent Elementary School HVAC projects for FY 2024 adopted CIP of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, as well as the FY 2025 CIP of one million, two hundred and five dollars, three hundred and, one million, two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars projected for Patuxent Elementary School HVAC project be reallocated to the Northern Middle School replacement project in FY 2025 CIP budget cycle. Fiscal impact: The current fiscal impact is zero. The FY 2025 fiscal impact would be a reduction in the deferment of the, would be a reduction and the deferment of the Patuxent Elementary School's HVAC CIP, and an increase of Northern Middle School's replacement CIP by one million, two hundred, twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars in FY 2025. Conclusion: Recommendation: The Department of Finance and Budget is making the Board of County Commissioners aware of the Board of Education's request to change the six-year CIP budget during the next budget cycle, FY 2025.
You know I have a question. So, I'm always asking about HVAC. Is Patuxent Elementary completely done?
No, we're asking to actually defer that project.
Why?
Because we worked with maintenance to really look at which projects we could potentially try to defer in order to try to allocate some funds towards Northern Middle. And we honestly, during the timeframe when we're asking for funding for the Northern Middle replacement, we have very small projects that are in the CIP, so that's one of the few that could be deferred. And based on the equipment and the, the condition of the equipment, they felt that it could be one that could be deferred because of the type of equipment that it is. It's, you know, ventilators, fan coil units, so that was, that was a judgment based on conversations and collaboration with maintenance.
So, when's the last time there's been any upgrade or improvements to Patuxent Elementary? Because I personally had to go there and walk it on an opening day, because it wasn't working. And that was only a few years ago. So, if you haven't changed anything, then it's still inadequate.
We did do a project there several years ago.
How many years ago?
Through a federal, through a federal grant program called QZAB. That was about, I would say, twenty fourteen. I'd have to go back and take a look, but we changed...
Nine years ago?
Schiller condenser.
This has been a lot sooner than then. In fact, I remember, I didn't go to my own child's opening day of school, because I had so many teachers upset, and asked me to walk through there on there, and it was very hot, it was an opening day, and some of that is a baseboard unit, it is extremely antiquated in there. As much as I hate AC stuff, that unit needs to be replaced, and obviously, somebody thought so to have it on the CIP then. So, to pull that out, to put it into something else, seems so unfair to me.
I think, at the end of the day, we don't know exactly what the issues were that occurred at Patuxent Elementary. I can certainly go back and tell you what the issues were, why the air was not working at the time. This is the first that I'm hearing about it, so if you could...
It's an old, it's an old baseboard unit, unless you've changed it, and there's no way for it to circulate. So, if this is the classroom, there's a unit there, and there might be one over there, and it just blows straight up in the air. I mean, that's why.
Well, if there were issues through the entire school, then I don't think that it's necessarily that all of the units stopped operating at exactly the same time.
No, they did not, but, but, but the problem was, is in some ones it didn't work, and some it worked, but, but the way, the way that the circulation is set up, it, it's so antiquated, it doesn't go through. I mean, before this is moved over there, I mean, I would think that, that, I mean, we've had an extremely hot summer here and going into it, that somebody would go through there and make sure that, that it's working properly, because if you're deferring this, how far are you gonna defer that project to?
We would be looking to defer it past the current CIP six-year cycle, so we would, we would be looking to defer it to later. But, Commissioner Hart, if I could say, we're also looking at a number of other avenues... Um, I have recently had a person moved over into my department from facilities who comes from an energy management background. And we are looking right now at a number of other avenues to be able to look at HVAC replacements, uh, not necessarily just through the CIP. But also by leveraging energy savings and going after rebates. So, there are other avenues that we are exploring. So, right now, this project might be deferred in the CIP till a later year. But we are really looking at ways that we can leverage some other operation, operational savings to be able to replace HVAC equipment. So, I can certainly come back and provide you with an update on that when we have a better plan of action, um, just in terms of our HVAC projects in total. But that is something that we are looking to do because we do have two point four million square feet of buildings that we maintain and there is large equipment. And so, of course, because of that, we need to, we need to take a look at it.
But how old is that unit?
I'm sorry?
How old is Patuxent's unit?
Patuxent Elementary would be, uh, original to, um, to the original construction. They are fan coil units, so they do tend to be fairly simple units.
So, how old is it?
Uh, I would have to go back and see, um.
Twenty plus?
It would be twenty plus years.
And we're going to defer it another six years?
At this point, that is the plan.
And why?
Well, there are, uh, fan motors that are replaced. We, uh, work with HVAC if there are, uh, specific, specific fan coil units that are.
Would bump Northern Middle over top of this if this was already in the plan?
Uh, Northern Middle was in the plan, um, in the CIP for planning before this project, um, in terms of priority, it's a, it's a higher priority project. That is not to say that we are not planning on upkeeping our HVAC as much as possible. That is something that we always have to do for our students and staff and so.
But if that was ahead, why was Patuxent in, in the plan and now it needs to be pulled, pulled out? I mean, if that was already ahead of it in, in the queue, then it should have already been ahead of it and you wouldn't have had to do this.
Well, we have multiple projects that are in our CIP at one time, so we don't typically just have one project at a time. So, there are, of course, competing priorities and we could always come back and ask for additional money for Northern Middle. But we're trying to actually offset and inutilize those dollars for Northern Middle.
And Mrs. Warner, I think that we greatly appreciate your efforts to, you know, transfer money between projects to save you from coming to us and asking for more money. I think that what, what this, the issue that this raises is that I, I can probably go back and pull the tape from the meeting where you came in and asked for this money to replace that HVA system. And you argued that it was old, could not be repaired any longer and had to be replaced. But yet, here you are today telling us, well, we can repair it and it'll last another six years. Well, I guess what comes to my mind is, why didn't you do that two years ago when you were here begging for money to put in a whole new system? And I think you understand that risk when you came before us today and that's the frustration, I believe, that Commissioner Hart is exhibiting is that, you know, you argued a few years ago that that system had to be replaced. And there is examples of where it's not working appropriately. I think that if you have, have a plan in place right now that will bring that system where it's adequate and the teachers aren't complaining. If that's what you're telling us here today, I, I just want to hear you say it on camera.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And that plan is going to be instituted, how soon and how much, and you already have the resources to do that?
So, yes, uh, so as far as Patuxent Elementary and, uh, me coming before you, of course, uh, the, a lot of the CIP projects, when we put in, uh, within our CIP as a long-range plan. They are planned on, based on end of useful life, of course. So, we start seeing issues and those projects then become a higher priority or a lower priority. So, things ebb and flow based on the age, but then also the performance of the equipment and the issues that we are having. So, those are discussions that we have with maintenance all the time. And the, um, uh, essentially, uh, from about spring of last year, well, actually, spring of this year to now, we've been in discussions with maintenance. And there have been a number of units where, um, the, uh, fan motors have been replaced. There has been a lot of corrective work to be able to get that equipment operating sufficiently. And as I said, um, we are looking at other avenues of trying to capture some other funding. So, the project wouldn't necessarily have to be deferred out, uh, beyond our, um, uh, you know, beyond like a seven-year time period. But right now, I don't know what those avenues are, they haven't been fully fleshed out. We're looking at a lot of, um, through Mener- uh, Maryland Energy Administration, other potential grant programs, so we're looking at options.
So, you defer this out six years. That's not, we're starting in six years. That, uh, excuse me, that doesn't mean it's completed in six years, that means we start the process again. So, six years doesn't mean it's done, that means now it's got to get funding, got to get design, got to get everything else like that. You're talking even more years, so six years could be ten years.
And I, I don't know if it could be ten years, uh, I would assume that it would be six years.
And, and yet, this is, this is a, one of the largest elementary schools, it combined two schools. It kept one principal instead of two, who was given a golf cart to drive back and forth. I mean, when you hear all this pushback and you heard me screaming years ago about Patuxent High School, it's the oldest high school and it was the last one to get AC in the gym. And you want to know why folks down there beat on me and tell me I'm not doing my job? It's because of stuff like that. And that's where I earn it and deserve it because stuff like that goes on all the time. For me to sit here and hear, well, we need to defer it to another school when this is the original equipment, I had to walk through it years ago, which is not my job to do, okay? Because it was inadequate then, it's inadequate now unless you can tell me something has changed between then and here it could be another eight to ten years? How's that fair to those people down there that their kids are already combined into one school as it is? How's that fair? What makes those kids not as good as the rest of the kids? And that school also has a lot of handicapped kids that go through there as well because it handles the whole area. How is that fair to them?
Well, in terms of deferring the project, like I said, we've been working with maintenance, those, that equipment has been getting, uh, has been corrected.
Does it work properly?
I don't know of any issues at Patuxent Elementary right now, I have not heard of any complaints.
And eight years from now, it's still going to be, we go in there, it's going to be just as efficient. I don't know how a wall unit, if you haven't changed it out, if that unit's right there, I don't know how it, it, it cools the air on the other side. They all told me, hey, if you're standing on top of it, it's cool, but as you get back there, it's not and those teachers work and all that heat and everything else like that. I, I don't know how that, I don't know how that's fair and why this project now is more important than that when it was important back then.
I, I don't know what more I could say.
I can tell you this, I'm not voting for it, if, if, if it comes to my vote, I'm not voting for it, that's my twenty percent. I know we're not voting today, but I can tell you that's where that's at.
So, so I do have another question. So, even if we do these two transfers, we're still going to be eight million in the hole. So, will Northern Middle School project be pushed out in the CIP? Or I know you said you had different avenues of finding more resources, or are you going to be cutting the current CIP to find money?
Well, and I have an entire presentation that I would like to be able to do for you that will explain what some of the avenues are that we are looking at. Um, but Commissioner Hart, um, one thing that I do want to say in order to, um, satisfy your question and your statement is that, um. You know, all of the, um, conversations in terms of what projects could potentially be leveraged. This is why Patuxent Elementary specifically was identified because maintenance felt confident that they could, as in years past, when we were asked by the Commissioners to be able to defer Northern Middle School. Um, there was a lot of conversation about how our maintenance staff could keep the equipment at Northern Middle School moving along and operational. That is something similar to that, that they are committing themselves to do. So, um, that's the best that I can give you right now. And like I said, we are looking at other avenues where we would be able to do the project earlier. So, that's certainly something that we have very much in our radar. But in terms of the CIP right now, that is our own, only avenue that we show, but we're certainly looking at other opportunities.
So, I'm going to ask something, so, so, back in, what was it, the eighties, you said we were building a school about every year or so? And it's been brought to me painfully many times, Mike, now that's why all the equipment's failing at the same time. But we'll build a new school, wherever it is, doesn't matter, wherever it is, spend millions and millions of dollars, yet all this other stuff's falling apart at all these other schools. Why not fix what we have first? Why is there a tennis court at Patuxent High School that's been, that's been unusable for four years? It's not my side of the street. I don't even think about it till I get a mad parent from Great Mills or whatever it was that said, how come they got to go to a Parks and Recs facility to play? Why don't we take care of everything we have now, get it right, and then do future projects? I mean, when it's millions and millions of dollars? I mean, I, I, I'm confused.
Right, so, I, I think as far as the tennis court at Patuxent High School, I think that is, uh, that maintenance has been trying to get some pricing for that and they do have.
Four years.
And they do have some pricing, so I think that they're moving.
Four years, four years. I know everybody likes to be polite and all, four years, if this is private business, you're out of business, four years, why?
I believe that during COVID, that court, uh, sat for a while and the water would, uh, disintegrated the, uh, the surface, um, because nobody was there, it wasn't being played. So, bird baths developed and the surface disintegrated. I know that since then, there have been moves to try to, um, get that court resurfaced. So, I believe that that work is happening soon.
I heard next year completion.
I don't know, um, I can certainly go back to facilities and find out.
But you see where I'm going? See where I'm going?
Well.
It's a, it's a reoccurring theme, you know?
Sure, sure.
I mean, you could, you go, one school has to have, i- it's combined and one principal and between that and appeal, you know? The, it, this Patuxent High School was great for everybody when we were building schools and we had to put trailers out back and everything like that, but then we didn't need it anymore. I mean, I can go all day long about students bust all over the place and all this and it's a frustration point of now I got to sit here and hear, well, we needed it then, but we don't need it now. And I'm going to shut up and let this thing move on, but I'm telling you, I'm doing my homework, because I go from school to school to school. I'm doing my homework, although there's people think I don't ever go anywhere, I'm telling you. I sit at these fields, I go from school to school and I hear it all the time, hey, Commissioner, why that? And I don't have an answer. And I jump up and down and scream and look like an idiot and I don't have an answer. And then I see that and go, huh, well, they tell us it's okay, but is it okay? Would the teachers say that? Would the students say that? That's what I care about, the teacher teaching that classroom is in, uh, as, uh, an environment that they should be.
One thing I've noticed and it's just an observation from a new county commissioner, as I have toured Calvert County from the north to the south. It appears that we keep building and putting Band-Aids on what we already have. And I can tell you as a new observer, that's been very frustrating for me.
So, to kind of respond back to what you both were saying, certainly, Commissioner Hart, you were talking about, why don't we fix what we have instead of building new? I think, you know, the CIP ends up being a combination of systemic components that you have to replace. Because you design a building, you build a building to be there at least sixty, seventy years, but then certain components like your HVAC system. You end up replacing, you know, at the twenty-fifth year or the twenty-five to thirty years so that you can replace those components one time before you end up demolishing the building. Um, so, it, it ends up being a combination similar to, of course, you know, the Commissioner's CIP with the county service building and other priorities. So, it's similar with us where we are replacing certain buildings, um, because the life cycle is due or it's overdue. And then other priorities also have to compete and we have to be able to fund all of those priorities. So, it's always a difficult, uh, decision to make and we understand and we empathize with the fact that we have limited funding. So, that is why we are trying to do what we can to be cognizant of, um, the level of funds that we expect to receive and do what we can in order to try to really maximize those.
Hard to explain to a constituent when we write every year the largest check we ever have to education. Last year was what, an additional thirteen million dollars? Unheard of in a small county like this. And then to hear, well, we don't have money to fix the school. The, the guy driving up the street goes, how is that possible?
Right, those are blueprint issues that.
I, 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 yeah, uh, blueprints not even due till next June. By law, it doesn't have to be funded till next June, not a dollar has to be funded today. And these are old existing problems, you know, they made fun of us, you know, one of the schools out here, I ain't going to name the name, the kids even did a video making fun of how there was mold in the schools and all this stuff. All I'm asking is fix what we have now. Fix it, you know? I mean, this county, our kids. The level of whooping I take of what Saint Mary's County's fields look like, do you know what it's like to have a kid plays two sports and hear about fields all around the place? Hear about conditions of tracks, this, that, and the other? Okay, I hear it constantly and here we can't even do AC in our schools? That's unacceptable, unacceptable, no parent would accept. We can't have proper air conditioning there when they see looks like stadiums when you go around here. And then we write a bigger check year after year after year and then have to take grief on asking about an audit? Jeez. I mean, you know what that sounds like sitting on this side?
So, it's just a work session, there'd be no votes today, but you're being prepared for your budget discussion. And if you would like to go through your presentation.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. So, I do appreciate, uh, being able to be here for the work session because I wanted to try to provide, um, some level of insight as to, um, the project, the Northern Middle project. And before coming before you for the CIP, I wanted to provide you with a little bit of, um, of an overview of where we're at, uh, with Northern Middle. And where, uh, the path moving forward, what we're looking at in terms of strategies. So, that is the purpose of today, so I appreciate that. Okay. So, the purpose of the work session today is to really recap the project schedule, scope, budget, and the state funding. I wanted to try to provide an overview of that. Um, the recent construction cost estimate that was part of the feasibility study and the associated factors with it. Um, the requested reallocation of funds from a CIP HVAC systemic project towards Northern Middle. And then lastly, highlight strategies for how we plan on trying to align the project scope and the budget for the, for the project. So, the schedule for the project, um, the ed specs were developed, the programmatic requirements in July of twenty twenty-two. We finished the feasibility study in March of twenty twenty-three. We've commenced design, we're in design, early design at this point. Uh, we started that in August of twenty twenty-three. Bidding is anticipated late November, uh, late twenty twenty-four, so November twenty twenty-four. And construction completion December of twenty twenty-seven, so about a three-year timeframe. So, the Northern Middle enrollment and project scope are as follows. Um, and I wanted to kind of highlight the enrollment, uh, and then provide a little bit of an overview of how the state participates in the project. So, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three enrollment at Northern Middle was six hundred and thirty-six students. The, uh, at the time, the projected enrollment was six hundred and sixty-nine. That was based largely on, um, what we had been seeing in years past in terms of, uh, returning students. And those enrollments being a little bit low post-COVID. But in fact, uh, as of August thirty-one, now this is unofficial enrollment at Northern Middle, but we actually have six hundred and eighty-seven students there. The state, yes.
What's enrollment at Calvert Middle or the other middle schools?
Enrollment right now, I would have to get back to. Enrollment right now? I would have to get back to you with that information.
Because we have seen instances where a little reallocation of school districts could have helped with capacity in that we don't have to build a school that's.
Sure.
At a certain number when we have other schools that are at seventy percent.
Correct, correct.
And you've done that analysis in this case?
We've done the analysis for the three adjacent schools, for Northern Middle, Plum Point Middle, and Windy Hill Middle. When you start, uh, looking at the district as a whole, because Calvert is long and wide, there are other aspects that we need to think about. And the board would have to look at that, such as transportation, length of time for busing. So all of those, uh, aspects have to be considered. Uh, so the state is interested in the seventh year enrollment projection. And for the state's purposes for funding, um, that projection right now is eight sixty-six. But I'm gonna go into a little bit as to exactly how the state looks at in a future slide. The planned capacity for Northern Middle is seven hundred and seventy-five state rate of capacity. And I'll, I'll talk about what that translates to as far as square footage in a, in a minute. So how does the state determine its funding calculation? If you look at the slide in front of you, essentially what the state is going to do is they're going to look at the subject school, which is Northern Middle, and they're gonna look at the adjacent schools. In our case, that is Plum Point Middle and Windy Hill Middle. They're gonna look at the total combined building capacity of all three schools. Then they're going to compare that to the total combined student enrollment in seven years. If the combined capacity for those three schools is less than what that total enrollment will be, then the state will participate in a bigger project, therefore a bigger school, as you can see from this, um, pictorial. So the issues, of course, with the state funding methodology is that it assumes that the county will build an addition if the school is over-enrolled after seven years or add portable classrooms. Um, it does not account for other competing local funding priorities, as Commissioner Hart just talked about. Um, that might be required, not only for the Board of Ed, but also for the Board of County Commissioners. You have other funding priorities that you have. And the state isn't really looking at that. They're just looking at that seven-year mark and that is it. Um, also, as we can all appreciate, costs have really only gone up. They have not gone down, so a future addition will of course cost more money versus building it now. So this pictorial right here kind of shows you in this bar graph before you. In FY 2022, you can see the yellow, uh, color is the capacity. It's the combined capacity at Northern Middle, Windy Hill Middle, and Plum Point Middle. And the blue bar is the combined enrollment at Northern Middle, Windy Hill Middle, and Plum Point Middle. So, uh, as of last year, the capacity, uh, across the three schools was twenty-two-hundred. The combined enrollment was nineteen-ninety, which means that there were two hundred and ten open seats. The seventh year, which is where that star is, that's the year that the state is interested in. They, uh, based on our combined enrollment projections across the three schools, that capacity is twenty-two-oh-two. So the state is essentially saying, okay, um, you have a school, a Northern Middle school, that is six hundred and eighty state rate capacity right now. We're willing to participate in a building that is essentially a little bit bigger, so six hundred and eighty-two students. So that capacity, they are willing to up it by two. Um, that is.
Two kit?
Yes, but that equates to specific square footage, which I'll talk about in a little bit as well. So, um, if you'll allow me, I'll, I'll talk about what that means. The six hundred and eighty state rate of capacity from nineteen-seventy-six is completely different than what students need now. So there's a pretty big difference. So we'll, we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, but in 2031, after the state has participated, our capacity needs are, uh, going over. So we're seventy-four seats over capacity, the next year, a hundred and thirty-five seats over capacity. As Commissioner Hand said, of course, there is an opportunity to be able to look at the redistricting.
Never happened. Never happened. I've taken a beating in that room many times. Never, never, never happening. And I asked the question six years ago, what do I tell mom and dad? And I was told, that's not your job. And I said, when mom and dad say, well, Mr. Commissioner, you're my representative, you tell me. I said, I'm being told it's our decision and we'll make it when we want to.
So Commissioner Hart, yes, you are absolutely correct. That is the board's purview to look at redistricting and it is a very complicated task that does, that does require taking a look at.
It's political. It ain't complicated. It's political. You take that kid that goes to Southern Middle School, he plays ball with all those kids down there. He goes to Appeal, he goes to Patuxent, what that? He goes to Southern, then you turn around, take that same kid and shoot him to Calvert. And it pumps up that number there and it keeps that number low down there because the teachers, there's an equation. How many teachers you get is how many students you have. And that's how that goes. And that's why years ago when Patuxent lost teachers and had, couldn't have classes, they said, well, you know, we might could do some online stuff. Well, we could bus them. It's political. Just call it what it is. It's not complicated. It's political. When there wasn't those other schools, they went to Patuxent. Wasn't complicated then. They put trailers out back. Then when they opened up, it became political. And that's why builders come and beat on us and go, can you take and raise it from over a hundred percent? Because we wanna build these big developments and stuff up here and put the kids in there. That's what it is. Not complicated. It's political.
And politics is complicated, certainly.
Politics is, is, is why they hate us because hide behind a political badge instead of just saying how it is.
Isn't total school enrollment going down?
Uh, so the projections actually show a slight increase when we look at the, um, ten-year, um, ten-year enrollment projection, and that's consistent with Maryland Department of Planning as well. And I can certainly share those numbers with you. They're in our educational facilities master plan and have been published with Maryland Department of Planning. There might be slight dips here and there, but when we look at the out picture, it's, it's, um, it's a slight increase. So moving on. Okay, so I wanted to go over the slide because I wanted to just show that the planned Northern Middle school is not an anomaly compared to the other schools around it. Um, and that also includes Calvert Middle, which is also, um, in that same range as far as the proposed capacity. So Windy Hill Middle and Plum Point Middle are a hundred and one thousand square feet each. Uh, Northern Middle, the existing, uh, state rate of capacity, Commissioner Hart, as we were just talking about, is six-eighty. However, the square footage is only eight, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet. The state says now that for, um, a state rate of capacity of six-eighty, really it should be over a hundred thousand square feet. So, um, those numbers certainly, the square footage there is, is certainly short of what that school needs to, to work properly in terms of.
But you're locked in though with that equation though, cause we went through that with Northern High School. Remember those plans, what happened to those plans? Where'd they go? Trash can and start over. Cause somebody projected how it should be and the state came back and said how it will be.
Actually, what happened were, was that we were over budget with that project and so we had to go back and redesign. So we were initially going to design a school that was fifteen-hundred state rate capacity. However, um, the project ended up coming in over budget and so we went back and redesigned.
Is that not accurate?
The state did not fund it at fifteen-hundred, correct.
Because they, right, because there's a way they said that the school, the amount of kid projection. They said, no, you're gonna put it on this.
So, so the state doesn't tell us what to do in terms of how big we're gonna build a school. Essentially what they say is we'll participate in a project that's this size. And if you county, you school system want to.
Then you pay for it.
Pick up the rest, you can pick up the rest, exactly.
They're still telling you what to do. Cause you need that funding or you'll never get it done.
We would need that funding. So, yes. So if I could, um, uh, tell you about Northern Middle, so essentially the new Northern Middle, what we're proposing is seven hundred and seventy-five, um, with a square footage of one oh-four, nine fourteen. But that includes three thousand square feet of community use space for Parks and Rec. And that is funded by the state. They participate in that at their, at their rate. So essentially it's the similar square footage as the other middle schools.
So what is that space, Parks and Rec space?
It's an oversized gym for Parks and Rec, um.
And then you're gonna charge us to use it?
Well, that would be based on the MOU. I do not know. I, I can't speak to these questions.
Today, you would charge us to use it, right?
I believe that there's an MOU for Parks and Rec usage, similar to, I think that there's back and forth.
After we pay to build it.
I'm not sure if there's use, if there is, uh, a charge for the actual usage or if it's the utility usage. I believe that's what it is.
I can tell you there's a charge for uses.
Okay. I believe you. Again, I don't know. All right.
Basketball games are played on it and there's.
So you're talking about the fields?
No, no, everything we use at the school, we pay for. But that might change.
There's Parks and Recs employees in there working it, but the custodials are the school system.
But we don't charge you to use our golf courses or any of our facilities.
Or the test.
Just for the record.
What test?
Yeah, or the tennis courts, cause that's why they don't fix ours.
That's right.
I'm sorry, we digress.
This meeting be continued into Wednesday?
We digress. I'm sorry, continue.
That's okay. So, um, okay, so the, the current budget right now is, um, essentially bottom line, anticipated state share, thirty-three million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Current local share, twenty-seven million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. For a total budget of sixty-point-nine million. Um, I have broken down the design and the furniture fixtures and equipment. That leaves you with the highlighted construction budgetary cost. That's where we are today. The feasibility study estimate came in significantly higher and I'm gonna go over what that feasibility study estimate, um, had as its factors and what we've done to try to improve those. So, um, the cost estimate factors associated with the feasibility study, of course, have to do with the fact that it's a constrained site. Um, we share a campus with the high school, shared, uh, resources, shared bus loop, uh, shared water, um, uh, tower and wastewater treatment plant. But then, of course, when you do that, um, you're going to have a constrained site and a lot of complicated phasing. Uh, because this project isn't bidding out till next year, next fall, winter, we have to build in an escalation, of course. And, um, as with any other, uh, state participated project, it has to be a lead silver or equivalent. Um, because it is a, an educational occupancy, uh, the state has different requirements for energy code and HVAC. Uh, and, um, so essentially what that means is our systems do become more complex and expensive. Uh, become larger, which forces the building to become larger. We have blueprint requirements, um, so that we have additional planning spaces that are needed for teachers, uh, and staff. And then the existing building demolition is included in this number, which includes asbestos abatement of the existing building. So those are some of the factors. So recent Maryland K through twelve bids, I was able to get this information through the interagency commission on school construction. So this is specific Maryland public K through twelve middle school costs per square foot. In 2020, three hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot. That cost went up to four hundred and twenty-seven dollars a square foot, which was a twenty-three-point-seven percent increase. In 2022, um, the middle schools, that bid came in at four sixty-seven dollars a square foot, which is a thirty-five-point-three percent increase from the 2020 baseline. Unfortunately, in 2023, we have not had any bids yet and Northern Middle is going to be bidding late, uh, 2024. So what we are here to present to you, again, uh, as we talked about, is the, um, request that we would like to make, which is to allocate the local, uh, HVAC systemic share of one point two-two-one million dollars towards Northern Middle School to raise that budget a little bit. And then I'll go into what some of the other strategies are that we're looking at to try to align the scope and the budget. So in addition to deferring that project and reallocating the, um, local CIP funds, um, we are in the process of requesting additional state funding. We're going through a variance request mechanism, so we're working with instruction. Um, and we are looking at, uh, one of the pieces that we're looking at is the high special ed numbers at Northern Middle. And we're trying to get some additional state funding participation towards those students for the project. One thing that we've done already in design is we've reduced the number of phases, um, uh, compared to the feasibility study. So the construction can be done in terms of the new building in one phase. That is already garnering us some estimated savings, so that is good. Um, we're also going to look at potential square footage that may, we may need to look at as a future core and shell. We're gonna identify out alternates to try to maximize the budget. Um, we're also going to, similar to what we did with Northern High School, we're gonna look to reduce some program square footage. However, we have to be careful. We don't wanna go below the line that the state will participate in or they will participate in less of a project. So that's a very complex dance that we have to do. And then there are some other potential project local allocation savings that we could put towards Northern Middle. Those projects are not closed out yet, so we can look at that once we get there. But that is also an avenue and an option that we are absolutely gonna be looking at. So at this point, I know we've had lots of questions, but I'll, I'll take any other questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I'm out, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Please your president, Mark Willis.
So I think we're gonna make an adjustment to the, uh, agenda.
Yes, sir.
And room, and we can do that.
Okay.
So at this time, um, we're gonna defer the presentation by the Veterans Affairs Commission and take our guests who are on a schedule. Good morning, Mr. County Executive. Welcome to Calvert County.
Thanks so much. I'm almost afraid to sit in this chair.
Welcome. Just don't talk about school. No, I like you guys. You could tell the state they're crazy for all this wild stuff they keep throwing at us. So no, I wanna thank you for, uh, stupid bills like right to sit and all this other kinda crazy mess. I don't know who, what, what they drink before they go up there, but, uh, yeah. Please, please provide a chair and everything else like that, yeah, instead of good old fashioned work ethic, so. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you so much for having us and, uh, you know, I, I spent about thirteen years on our county council and five as county executive. And so I've, I've, uh.
And who are you?
I'm County Ball, uh, Howard County Executive and President of the Maryland Association of Counties. So I'm definitely familiar with a lot of the, the challenging conversations that are, that are sometimes had to ensure that your constituents have the best quality of life. We appreciate you allowing us to come and, and visit you on behalf of Maryland Association of Counties. Uh, we want to continue, as Commissioner Hart said, to be an advocate and to be a partner in ensuring that, uh, the, the local perspective is heard and respected in the state and that we continue to collaborate on all of our counties. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Michael Sanderson, our executive director, to, uh, briefly, uh, give a report and then we'll have some questions. I know you have a robust, uh, rest of your day agenda.
Thank you all, Commissioners. Thanks very much for your time. I'm Michael Sanderson, Director at Mako and our group serves to try and be a voice on behalf of county governments and all the services that you provide to Maryland residents everywhere. Um, as is our want, we brought a nice thick packet with a whole bunch of information about different policy issues and topics and so forth. And then I get to deliver, no, I'm not gonna walk through the packet in a whole lot of detail. And that's always a nice little release valve. But it's there, um, for, for you and, and for, uh, for folks who have, uh, have the information for the meeting. Um, I wanna take just a few minutes to do quickly through a few policy issues that are not so much looking backward at what happened last year and last budget, but things that are still alive and ahead. I think that's probably where we are on the calendar. So I'll try and do that briskly and if I give short shrift to something or miss a topic, um, it's just a matter of economies and we can talk about anything else that's on your mind as well. So let me, let me dance through a, a few things. I'll start with the state's overall fiscal circumstance. Um, that's my background and it's a big deal when. Um, that's my background, and it's a big deal when the state has a budget problem or a surplus that, that tends to affect what you all can, can accomplish back home. Um, I think we're in that kind of circumstance, uh, right now. There was a bit of a pivot on, on budget and fiscal issues back in the spring. We went through a time during the la- latter part of the pandemic where I think federal efforts to keep us from having an economic collapse that came along with the public health pandemic, um, ended up sort of buoying the American and Maryland economies pretty substantially. A lot of folks were gathering more income, and there were some folks who had more just, you know, disposable money around to buy stuff and do things and that sort of thing. So we actually saw a weird sort of artificially inflated economy for a window of time. Um, that's, there are signs suggesting that that ride is sort of over. Um, we, in March of twenty twenty-three, back in the middle of this last session, uh, General Assembly always, they balance to a certain number and they refine it in the month of March before they pass a budget in April. They wrote down revenues by about three hundred and fifty million dollars in March, and that was, that was sort of time to take the punch bowl away. This party's getting a little too raucous, right? So, um, that sent a little bit of a message around, around Annapolis that maybe don't make those big multi-year funding commitments. Maybe we're not in, in a super white-hot economy after all. Nobody knows the nature of the economy. Like unemployment is super low right now, but this doesn't feel like a rip-roaring economy in most conventional ways. The state is going to come back at the end of this month, and their, their Board of Revenue estimates will meet again and reset numbers, and I think the smart wagering is that they will write down their estimates for the current year and for next year as well. So if they do that to the tune of a few hundred million dollars, three or four hundred million dollars, that sounds like an absolutely enormous amount of money, and in almost any context it is. For a sixty-five billion dollar state budget, four hundred million dollars isn't an enormous number, but it probably moves us from like DEFCON three to DEFCON two in thinking about, you know, how, how, how are we going to think about long-term spending commitments? What's the spending affordability commitment, committee that guides these sort of things? What are going to be their limitations and so forth? I think it's going to be a reserved sort of year. Sometimes that puts county governments on a little bit of, on, on our heels. We'll be, we'll be ready for nip and tuck suggestions in the budget cost shift here and cut some program there. We're, it's, it's pretty common. That's actually more common than not. So the last few years of having relatively easy budgets may be behind us. What does that mean for the state's commitment to public schools? And we're three years or so into the ten-year plan, the, the blueprint for Maryland, the Kerwin Commission's recommendation, call it whichever you like. The state is situated a bit differently than county governments. Counties are already feeling this. Not every jurisdiction has been caught up with, with really upside-down numbers, but it's sort of a matter of time. The counties are going to come in waves where the Kerwin requirement, the blueprint requirement exceeds your maintenance of effort and sort of takes over as the driving force for what the state, you know, obliges your county to contribute. Uh, but we've, we have a number of jurisdictions and including some large jurisdictions who like had to dig deep into reserves just to make this year's budget work to be able to fund their education commitment. And this is only like year three of a multi-year, you know, ten-year phase in. So, um, I don't know what that portends for the state. The state's in something of a different position. Um, the, the voters several years ago refined the, the workings of an education trust fund. Casino money goes into an education trust fund and needs to be used for just new spending on education stuff. Some of it has gone into, um, construction projects, but a lot of it has been basically sitting in that trust fund waiting to pay for the state's cost of the blueprint. So basically, they've got money in the sock for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and they start feeling that pinch in twenty-seven. So they're not quite feeling the pressure the same way county governments are, but Baltimore City and Prince George's County and a number of smaller jurisdictions are already feeling that pressure locally, and we serve the same residents, we read the same newspapers, it's in the air. I don't know what that's going to mean for refinement or more attention. I think most folks who voted for the blueprint are still committed to the goals, but what means to get there and the timetable and the expectations for what you do in year four versus year seven and whatnot, some of that might be on the table as soon as this coming session. Um, I'll be brief on a couple other topics. Over the last couple of years, the state legislature passed and then refined a law to, to have employers offer paid leave, paid family leave for their employees. Um, that's a big broad policy. It's going to work more or less like unemployment insurance, where you pay a premium into a state program and then the state pays the, um, pays the benefits. Last year, we smoothed the path for employers like most counties who already are in the strong benefits business to basically opt out of that state system and run your own thing. Uh, we are in the midst of working with the, our sister association, MAB, the Association of Boards of Education, the Municipal League. It looks like we'll have community colleges and libraries and others pool together and do this as a co-op. We want that to be a plug and play option for, for counties to probably bring down costs. And if we all go to bid together, we probably can bring down the cost of the, of the actual service providers on behalf of, this might turn into thirty, forty, fifty entities. So I think that's, that's in the offing. You're probably in the midst of trying to decide where, where to position the county on, on those things.
You know, the problem though is the replacement employees, and that you can't. I mean, and, and, and because we obviously had that discussion October one, that goes in effect, but, you know, even if you pay the premium, where's the, where's the people come from? Can't hire people now.
Uh, and, and, and the, the program is not, I, how shall I say this? Um.
It's not good. Just say what it is. It's not a good program. It's not thought out first. It's pass it first, figure it out later, like me legislation.
There, there are some pieces of this that are not perfectly constructed when you have turnover in roles. Like we're having, we're having folks in public health and public safety jobs in local government where you train them up and in seven months.
Can't find nurses, can't find, it, there's not a, there's not a profession out here, isn't struggling to fill those, those holes, and this just put a strain on it.
I think both the public sector like us and the business community will continue to be at the table to try and get some refinements on that front. For the larger universe who doesn't opt out, the benefits don't start rolling until the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So, so there's a window of time before this, before this really gets up and running. So anyhow, um, we're in the implementation phase, but Mako's trying to deliver a product to make it easier for towns, counties, you know, libraries and so forth to do this together than, rather than everybody on their own. Um, I'll, I'll mention adult-use cannabis. The voters weighed in and said they wanted that to be no longer lea- no longer illegal under Maryland law. The, the easy part of the rollout was this past July one, where the sellers who were already licensed and cited for, for, um, medical use could expand into commercial use. You got more coming. There's more licensees coming. It'll come to you all for citing decisions and so forth. Um, they have, the state has not given us a particularly good game plan for local zoning and for lo- site approval and so forth. They use the term in the legislation of reasonable zoning, which it doesn't exist anywhere in Maryland law. We've got case laws stacked up to here for what is and is not okay in the zoning process. Reasonable zoning sounds like more opportunities for folks to sue their county if they're not happy about their location choices. I don't know where this is going to end up. Some of it may be in court. Some of it may be back in legislation. Um, Maryland went with a relatively low tax rate strategy. It was a deliberate effort to avoid ending up like some states, a few states said, we'll tax the growers and the distributors, and then at the final sales point. And if you end up with a fifty or sixty percent total tax rate, you end up sending people who might want to buy legally back to the old illegal sellers. And if you're trying to provide a, a health benefit and more regulation and more oversight and that sort, that sort of thing, you don't want to send people back to the street corner. You want them back at a licensed, supervised, regulated seller. So lower tax seems like a reasonable direction to go. Um, they did leave local government, government virtually out of that process. We, we got a, a smaller piece of a smaller pie than any other state that has local governments basically doing the citing and community efforts and all that sort of stuff. So that's unfortunate, maybe another bite at that apple. I ra- I honestly don't know.
What's recreational tax proposed at?
It's, it, it's going to mirror, it's going to mirror the nine percent tax for alcoholic beverages.
It's not like how cigarettes is or anything like that.
Right. So it's not a excise tax that's kind of hidden and baked into the price. It's just, instead of a six percent sales tax like on a pair of shoes, nine percent's for either a drink or for a.
Will they take that nine percent? So, you know, originally when that was sold in, that was sold in. Obviously, it's always under education for kids, didn't go there. But there, there was a talk that what would come back to local jurisdictions, and it, it, it's so minuscule. Was there going to be any provisions put in that nine percent that what's sold in that jurisdiction will stay a portion in that, or all goes back general fund?
Yeah, back to the state general fund. Although there is a big chunk of that money that's, that's back to, I'm, I'm going to, um, blank on the name of the fund, but there's, nominally, they want to see some social reinvestment come from this as opposed to all of it being state general fund money, and it sounds like there will be a role for county governing bodies to help, help identify nonprofits in the community and so forth that might be recipients of those grants. But that's not the same thing as a third of the money goes back to the county, which is the way Michigan and New York and a number of other states that don't have local sales taxes have done it.
Which is really frustrating because the county actually does all the work.
Uh huh.
When it comes to enforcement, regulation, and so, yeah, that's, we're, we're not happy with that.
And it's absurd. It's not going to be managed in a three-tiered system type thing, so I'm, I, and they're like, see, and there is no direction. So.
Right. Um, so what they, what they haven't done, they haven't set up the sort of local oversight bodies like we have local liquor boards, liquor commissioners in every county and so forth, and the state, I think properly, said for these products with a more limited number of licensees, that that'll be run through the state, and there's going to be a state cannabis commission that manages all those, whether you get a license and whether you get it suspended and revoked. And so we're not going to create the entire farm team down at local governments like we have for, for liquor and alcoholic beverages. But on the tax side, they had an opportunity to follow a model and just didn't do it. We may or may not get a second bite at that. I don't want to be, I don't want to be over optimistic, so. Um, and let me close with one more thing, and, and I'll be skipping other stuff, but happy to get into whatever else you'd like to talk about. Um, as we've been visiting lots of jurisdictions, your counterparts from across the state, both large and small counties are really concerned about being able to bring in the next wave of firefighters. EMS is its own problem with a bunch of challenges, but whether it's volunteer or career or a mix of both, um, getting new folks to walk in the door, the training burden is substantial, the time commitment is substantial, and we're up against some demographic trends, I think, as well. You come, put all that stuff together. We got an awful lot of sixty-eight-year-old veterans, you know, who are, who have been on the, you know, volunteer company for forty-five years, still running rides because there's no twenty-eight-year-old to back them up. Uh, we did a blue ribbon commission. Annapolis kind of likes that. Bring everybody together and give us some specific suggestions. That was last year's bill. Our hope is to try and pursue something this year. It'll probably take some resources from the state to, to, you know, enhance your LoSAP or give them some help with the training or, um, educational opportunities for folks who give time. We already have a few tax-related tools in the toolbox, but I think we need more, and we need some help from the state on that front. So we're, we're in the actively working on that towards some recommendations come Ju- come December and a bill come January. So top priority for an awful lot of our counties, really worried about it. With that, I've given short shrift to an awful lot of different topics. We take up, you know, seven or eight hundred bills in a typical legislative session. We take positions on two hundred or more. I could be here for four hours. You don't want that. They don't want that. But if there's anything else you'd like to talk about, both of us are delighted to, to, to respond.
So we greatly appreciate the support and that you all provide to a small county like us. You know, we couldn't do it without you, and, you know, you raised all the issues that we talk about. Uh, you know, unfunded mandates or not funded enough mandates. Uh, recently had a conversation with the governor and told him, you know, blueprint, what, what it's doing to us is all the money we give them now is going to go to salaries, and they can't improve programs, add new programs, you know, meet needs of students because, uh, we can barely afford to give them the money for the salaries. And it's just gonna, in the end, I think it's going to harm the school systems and not benefit the school systems, but I'm preaching to the choir. You know, but we, we really enjoy and appreciate the membership of Mako and partnering up with all of our other rural counties. They don't know where we are most of the time, and so, uh, we appreciate the efforts. And, uh, I do want to say my time at Mako, you know, it was never big counties against small counties or rurals against, you know, we all worked together, and, uh, we'd have issues with differing opinions, but we always worked it out and, uh, came to consensus. So, uh, that, you don't see that often in every organization, but, um, just, uh, I mean, unless my fellow commissioners have.
I'm very appreciative of your efforts, very appreciative. I mean, you beat your head against a wall, but if you don't, then they go, well, they don't even say anything, so just keep going.
That's right.
So.
Yeah.
I think blueprint should be the focus. I mean, it's, it's put a significant strain on probably every county in the state of Maryland. Uh, something's got to be done at state level to correct that. It has to be, and I'm sure you guys hear it every day. I preach it to the choir. That's all I have to say.
At Mako, we heard from a cou- as you know, heard from a couple of small counties who said they absolutely cannot afford it, and they're going to let the chips fall where they may. Another thing, I'm our Mako representative, and last year was all new for me, and I appreciate all that you do. And, uh, sometimes I felt like a fish out of water, but, you know, I was reeled right back in and, uh, very impressed with the work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your participation, and, you know, Mako is all about one county, one voice. And, uh, blueprint's probably the number one issue we're hearing as we're going throughout, and similar to you. We talked to the governor, the presiding officers. We're hopeful that they're going to take another look at blueprint because we all want the best teaching and learning environment for all of our kids. How do we get there in a affordable, sustainable way that'll actually help our kids and our educators? And I think we need to take another look, and I think everyone recognizes that, and so now together, maybe we can create a path forward.
So they will give us more answers at winter conference, navigating through the choppy waters.
There you go. And we did not pay him for that. With that alley-oop, Michael, can you remind?
He's, he's just showing off. He did his homework, that's all.
So, yeah.
You know, just for us, as I think Mr. Hart alluded to, last year, we gave the school system thirteen million dollars in new money. That was double the mo- we'd ever given them before, and that was all for salaries and blueprint.
And another one coming.
And, and, yeah, and people, what people, a lot of people don't understand is that was just the first part. They're going to need another thirteen million or more next year just to meet blueprint, and then the year after that, there's going to be more just to meet.
And it grows, as you know.
And for us, that's a big bite, you know, we're.
And back to that other bill that pays up to, I think, a thousand dollars a week, I guess, the, um, I'm sorry, is the time to care.
No, the time to care.
Uh huh. What happens if twenty percent of your workforce decides to use that legislation? You don't have personnel now. How much money do you have to build into these budgets for subs or everything else like that? Because that train has to keep rolling. That train can't stop, and that's, I mean, that.
And if you add that time to their normal leave that they're getting anyway, uh, we got employees that could take off six months.
Yes, you could.
They could be going six months.
With pay.
With pay.
And you, and you.
And we still got to do the work.
And the work still.
The work doesn't stop.
You can't have the nine-one-one call center just be a bunch of empty desks and phones, right?
That's right. That's right.
It, it, it's got consequences on beyond just paying a premium into a pod, right?
Look at the timing, putting it at all the same time. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's too much.
It is.
It's a, it's a burden, but we really appreciate what you do for us, and we try to support you as best we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll hope that you'll be able to make it out to the winter conference.
Right, December, December sixth to eighth, Dorchester County, the usual, you know, deep engagement, that's the roll up the sleeves, December right.
Not like August.
No. I, I will say that it's, it's close confines, and it's right before the start of the legislative session, so we take full advantage of that. We go out of our way to try and bring legislators to that event. What I like is a panel talking about a challenge we're facing at the county level, and we have the chair of the committee that's going to hear the legislation on that in the room moderating the panel. So she gets exposed to the, the boots on the ground, because sometimes you miss that up in the, you know, up in the, those beautiful old buildings in Annapolis on the campus. You're kind of missing the real world a little bit. We get closer to that in Cambridge.
If there's something that you need from us, just ask.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your, your public service.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We appreciate you here.
Take care of the rest of your day.
That brings us to a presentation from the Veterans Affairs Commission. Want to apologize and thank you for your patience.
Sure. Um, so Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources, and I have with me Dr. Brandon Temple, who's our Veterans Affairs Chair, and Patricia McCoy, who's our Veterans Affairs Vice Chair. Um, I will say, um, this is the second year, um, that the, that we've been before you, and, um, our department really stands behind supporting this, and I want to give special credit to Lorraine Joyner, who's not with us, my assist, executive assistant, because she is committed to this effort. Yeah, come on up.
Jennifer, we just introduced you.
Just want to give her some support. Echo her comments on Lorraine. It's fantastic. She keeps us going.
That's good.
All right. Do a little slide check here. Good. All right, uh, good afternoon. Wow, it's been a lot today, hasn't it? Uh, we don't, we have no business with a CPI or PAR or HVAC.
No acronyms.
No, no HVAC. Uh, our, our systems over there where we meet, Community Resources, keeps us nice and cool during our commission meetings, so I can report that we're all good there.
In fact, it's chilly in there sometimes.
We're good.
But, uh, again, I'm, uh, Dr. Brandon Temple, the Chairman of the Veterans Affairs Commission, and I'll let.
But, uh, again, I'm, uh, Dr. Brandon Temple, the Chairman of the Veterans Affairs Commission, and I'll let-
I'm Patricia McCoy, I'm the Vice Chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission and the Representative for Stallings, Williams, American Legion Post two oh six at Chesapeake Beach.
And what we're here to do today is just give the commission and the citizens of Calver County who are listening at home or may watch this presentation later, just an update on what the Veterans Affairs Commission has been doing this year in its second year in existence, and kinda walk through, since we have a new, uh, three new commissioners this time around, kind of the, how we came to be, how we're composed, that way, uh, kinda bring you up to speed, uh, and then maybe next year we can just dive right into the details. But wanna get, provide some background to everybody here. Uh, we were created by a resolution by this board in March of twenty twenty-one, and we had our first meeting in August of twenty twenty-one. And here we are two years later, it's moved very quickly and we've, uh, done a lot of good work in that time period. And in a short time period, having to come together, you know, the, the foreman, storman, norman, all those things you have to do within a group, uh, to get going. Uh, we, we've done that pretty quickly and, uh, it's, it's been great so far. Uh, our composition for our group is we have a representative from each of the three districts, we have one representative from each of the four legion posts, we have a veteran business owner and then a veteran educator or administrator position as well. And throughout our, the last two years, we've maintained this, uh, everybody has been on the, uh, the commission, has stayed on the commission except for, uh, one exception where, you know, Wilson Perrin had to be called for other business. So, John Gray from his post, his American Legion post, took over for him, but, uh, we did have Wilson for the first year.
He covers a lot of ground.
And we know Wilson in this county is a long history of covering ground.
When I flipped through and I saw him, I said, he's everywhere.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, Wil- Wilson was a busy, busy man, he's like, I gotta bow out, and, uh, but we did get a replacement of John Gray from his post and it's been fantastic. So that's the group we're working with and that's how we're composed. We also have two statutory ex officio members, so we have one from the board of, uh, from your board. We have a member that is our ex officio member, that's Melanie Woodson from Human Resources is in the back. And we also have a statutory relationship with the College of Southern Maryland. Uh, this last year, we've expanded that membership to, uh, Maryland, University of Maryland Global Campus, who does tremendous work around the world with our, our military service members and veterans. In fact, my first college course I ever took was through University of Maryland Global Campus while I was stationed in Korea at twenty years old. So, when they came to talk to us, I had a story to tell them, like, you got me started in my education journey, which ended up in a PhD. So, like, they got me started and it's great to have that relationship. And then also, ex officio member with the Calvert Library, who's probably been our most important partnership in this last year, and I'm glad Carrie's here. Oh, she had to leave, she had to leave, but, uh, it's been such an important relationship and we'll get into some of that later. All right, and this is our vision and mission statement that we created in the first few months that we were together as a group. And you, you see in the vision, it's really focused on, on receiving our benefits and services that our veterans are entitled to. And that's not just veterans, but also military personnel living in the county. But the mission statement really, I think, bring home what we're really trying to do here. It's not just about entitlements and benefits, it's about creating a community, it's about creating some fellowship between our veterans to support one another here in the county and to be there for one another. Like you talked about today in the Suicide Awareness Month, it's that peer-to-peer support that oftentimes saves a life because we can speak the same language as, as one another. So, we wanna really create that fellowship and then also bring awareness to the county of those who don't, who have never served or don't know anybody who's served, to kinda close that gap between, uh, those two groups. All right, and as, uh, Commissioner Hart, who ju- who left, told us earlier, um, yeah, he runs a business and he doesn't have all the answers to everything, and in all of your lives, you've been in business and work and you know that you have to rely on folks to come in, experts, to give you the information you need to be successful. And we do this every month, uh, Pat's actually our coordinator for our community connections. And we have, at our monthly meetings, we have somebody come in to talk to us about an issue that's important to, to veterans in the local community. So you can see the list here, everything from, uh, housing to education to caregiver support, which has been a huge identified issue in the county, uh, all the way to end-of-life care for our veterans from the Calvert, uh, or hospice in the Chesapeake. So, we need that input to inform our decision-making, to inform our objectives and how we think, uh, we need to best help the county, uh, and the veterans in it. So this, these are just invaluable in, in conducting our business. You have any, Pat?
No, we have, uh, coming up, uh, next month, at our October meeting, we will be having the, uh, one of the big things in the survey that, when we first started, we put out a survey, one of the things that the veterans in Calver County were concerned about was a service officer, veteran service officer. We have the American Legion Department Service Officer, Adrian Gamboa, who will be coming and talking to us at our October meeting concerning the requirements to be a certified veterans' service officer and talk about the different things when it comes to what the service officer is all about and what they need to do.
We also have Senator Michael Jackson coming out as well later in the year, who is the, the Chairman of the Veterans Caucus on the, the Senate side of the General Assembly and to talk to us about some of the legislation they're gonna be working on, uh, in the next legislative session. All right, we also have a certificate of appreciation program that we've instituted to recognize the businesses around this county that bend over backwards to support our veterans. And you see there Bull Rush's Cafe up top, providing, you know, periodic free breakfasts to veterans on Tuesdays, and these breakfasts are made possible for businesses like CJ Johnson, who supports and funds these. And they've also just extended that to first responders as well on different days, so they're, they're expanding that out to beyond just veterans. Uh, like I said, the Calvert Library, that's the picture you see there. Calvert Library's been a huge partner in our work and we're, wanna increase this out into the community. So, if anybody on the board or anybody in this room knows somebody who's out there helping veterans and thinks they need recognition, we're happy to take those inputs and we wanna make sure that they get recognized by the community. Some of the feedback we've gotten this year in, in a lot of our different meetings and public events that we've had is always access to information, the VA is a, both Maryland and the, the federal, it's a very complex system. And what we've seen, uh, is that, you know, especially the older veterans and their families, they have a harder time navigating the systems because they're not used to working on a computer. We hear this over and over and over again, like, we don't know how to use computer. So, that's another great relationship we have at Calvert Library, they offer those types of services, where they can walk you through, uh, the internet, and they have a veterans team over there that can kinda work them through some of that stuff. Mental health and medical care, this is not just unique to Calver County, this is everywhere, this is nationwide. We're hearing a lot about that, transportation to VA facilities, main facilities are in Baltimore and DC. You know, thankfully, we have some new computer, community-based outpatient clinics that are in Lexington Park and, and, and Charlotte Hall. And I know Pat just went over to Charlotte Hall, uh, a couple of weeks ago, she said it was fantastic.
That, that, that C box is absolutely phenomenal. One of the issues that they're having, not just the C box here in Southern Maryland, but all over, is staffing. They're not taking any new patients at the C box in Charlotte Hall because they're short doctors and, uh, so that's a thing that they're working on, uh, but it, I mean, it's a facility, i- if you got, ever get a chance to go down there, it is phenomenal.
And you talked about it earlier, Commissioner Hart, just the feeling some of these key jobs in nursing and other specialties is just so tough across the country and even tougher when you're working with smaller counties like, like Calver, St. Mary's. Um, also caregiver support resources, this is one we keep hearing over and over again, because what happens is a lot of these veterans are older and they're no longer mobile or they, they no longer, you know, speak in some cases. And what's left is a spouse who did not serve, but is now trying to figure out this complex system that is the VA. And with all that, all the problems that come with it, of having a, a power of attorney to do certain decisions on, on part of a, a veteran or just to file paperwork, it's just this huge, uh, it's a huge issue. And we heard that, we had a caregiver support, um, from the DCVA come down and talk to us. And then we had a vent at the Calvert Library where we actually brought in the DCVA to do caregiver support briefings to the, the county and also be there to sign people up for different programs that they have available for them. That's everything from respite if they needed to go, you know, go shopping and have somebody stay with the veteran when they're in care or, uh, many of the other programs out there. So we brought that here and we're looking to do more of that in the future as well to get people signed up for those programs.
Coming up at the county fair, the Veterans Affairs Commission will have our tent there. And we will have several representatives from the DCVA that will be coming down to talk to us concerning the caregiver support. Uh, so, uh, and we've got several other people from different areas like the, uh, millennial, she calls it, millennial podcast for the younger veterans to get information out to them, so there's things we're working in progress and working on every day.
And that's the hard part about veterans, is you have some twenty-four-year-olds that are veterans and then you have World War Two, I think we have two World War Two veterans in the county. So, you imagine that span-
Seventy-five years or so.
Of people and, and, and how each of those different demographics communicates their different needs and it is the full gambit of things you can, you can think of. And it's, it's a difficult problem and in many ways the VA has an impossible task to, to do that, um, given the limited resources that are available. And, you know, anything we can do to help ease that and make that better is what we need to be doing.
Well, it's so smart to have that tent at the fair and to bring those representatives in because as you're going through this, I'm thinking, how do they get these people? How does the public find out? You know, and sometimes people are, uh, have mental health issues, uh, they have PTSD, they don't know where to turn, they go within themselves. And we're dealing now with caregiver for my dad and, um, it, it, it wears a caregiver out, it definitely does. So, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, and you're right, then, well, I'll cover this a little bit later or maybe just cover now, but since you mentioned it, but the communications piece is something we've really been working on because, you know, the, now in this day and age, we automatically think about, we'll put it on Facebook or we'll put it out in an email. What we're hearing from a lot of these caregivers, these senior caregivers is they still read the, you know, the local paper. That's where they get their information, they don't know how to use email or social media, and if they did, they don't wanna use it. You know, that's, that's where we're getting that feedback. So, that's, that's part of the problem we're having is trying to figure out how we can reach the most people possible, using all the means possible, but, you know, you can't put out radio ads and it, it, that, that has a cost associated with it. So it's really trying to figure out what's the best way to reach people. And that's part of, you know, here's another example that we have hard copy, we have internet links, but our Veteran Resource Guide, we have, uh, you know, those business cards that we hand out that have a QR code and a lot of folks don't know how to use a QR code, so we're, we're happy to, to teach them on the spot. There, you pulled it up right there. Look at that.
Oh, great.
Pull it right up.
I mean, I've actually heard of people not knowing about the benefits until it comes time for hospice to be involved and hospice actually making this notification, I've heard that at several times.
That's right, and that, that's the other, you know, so a lot of folks feel like they don't want any benefits or they don't deserve any benefits. That's another big issue out there is, hey, my buddy didn't come back or my buddy came back with no legs and, you know, I'm just sitting here with my own mental problems, it's none of one else's business, you know, who am I to complain? That's just one scenario, but that happens over and over, it's that comparative, you compare yourselves to others who you served with and you, you feel like you don't need anything. And then it comes time to when you do and you hadn't paid attention or sought it out before and you don't know where to start. And it is a complex system to, to navigate and figure out where do I start to get the benefit that I need. And this is one of the resources we have, it says it's living documents, so we're constantly updating this and anytime it's updated, it's updated in real time. And if you go to that QR code, like, uh, the county administrator just did, and I updated something in ten minutes, he went back, it would show the new information on there, so we try to keep that up as much as possible and we have that ready every time we're, we have the tent set up at a local van.
So where could a person get their VA ID renewed? Do you have to go to Baltimore? Because there's someplace locally they could do it.
You can go down to one of the C boxes also to get, uh, to, to take care of that. Because I mean, I've been-
Charlotte Hall, Lexington Park.
Charlotte Hall, Lexington Park, and, yeah. I've been in the DCVA system, the, the, the system here in, in the Southern Maryland area is associated with the DCVA system. And so, I've been registered since nineteen eighty-nine, I never went to get a doctor. And I went down there one day and got it, and they laughed at me. I said, well, maybe one of the doctors I need to see is a psychiatrist. But it was, it's a very simple process, and you've got, but you've got to be registered in the VA system before you can get one of those cards. So that's something, if you're a veteran and you're not registered, you need to get registered into the DCVA, to the VA system.
Thank you.
Some of the events we've had this year, we were at the Calver County Fair last year, we did a, a, a joint booth with the American Legion. This year, we're gonna be back in, in twenty twenty-three, but we're gonna have our own separate booth. Uh, we use some of the, the funds that were made available at the commission last year to purchase that and give us some, you know, infrastructure to, to participate in these events. Uh, National Veterans Own Business Week is coming up as well, that's something we work with the department, the economic department on. And they really have the ball in that and we support them any way they, they, they need to. Community Resource Day, uh, again, with the Board of County Commissioners here with the Gold Star Families and the Month of Military Child back in April, we wanna continue those types of proclamations, uh, each year to keep awareness up and to keep people involved. The Moral Day ceremonies, which, uh, I see many of you add as well, both here at the courthouse and over at Stars and Stripes at Chesapeake Beach, uh, we wanna keep doing that, and then the library meet and greet events and the caregiver event. So, in January, we had a Veterans Affairs Commission meet and greet at the Calvert Library. We had about twenty folks show up from the county to ask us questions and, and introduce themselves. And from that, we've seen increased participation in our monthly meetings, people showing up online, people showing up in person to, to be there and actually add input and add value to what we're doing there, uh, which we, you know, we were open to and encourage. Our social media reach and, you know, as we talked about, improving our communications, we've gone out and worked with the CMR here in the county to, to do those posts and then work within our informal networks to share these posts, and as you can see, you know, over a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand impressions on our posts and, uh, some shares. But that's just one way to get at communication, and we gotta figure out, uh, better ways to get at, in particularly the, the, the older communities. And we have talked to the, um, Office of Aging and some other entities in the county to, to kick around some ideas of what we can do there. Like, just even putting up something on their bulletin board at the Office of Age or the, the community centers, et cetera, that type of thing. And this is a, you know, here's just kind of a, a list of the accomplishments, accomplishments we've done this last year. We just, recognizing those who support veterans, enhancing and, and expanding our ex officio membership. We're very active at the state level with their Veterans Affairs Commissions and their Veterans Affairs, uh, events that they have and also here in Southern Maryland with the Four County Council, et cetera. So, we're involved in all those things. Veterans Court Initiative is something we've worked with, uh, State's Attorney Harvey on. It's, we're not quite sure yet if Calver County has the, the numbers for a Veterans Court. But what we have done through, uh, uh, Mr. Harvey is worked in Southern Maryland to get veteran, are you a veteran on the intake form for any of those criminals that are coming in or those who are, uh, accused of a crime? And then see if they can be pushed into one of the mental health or drug courts, if that's where, uh, they need to go. And then from there, they're referred to the veteran, uh, Maryland veterans to get the help they need and the benefits they have earned, uh, for those types of things. So, not a Veterans Court per se, but we're using the mental health and the, the drug courts as, uh, a proxy for that in the meantime, which is, is, it's fantastic. And then the, uh, once again with the library, we had a benefits clinic at the library where, uh, the folks from Maryland State VA came out and, and briefed us there, caregiver support and I'll, I'll cover the claims report in the, uh, in the going forward there. Improving our communications, we're also, you know, exploring what we can do potentially to have a veteran service officer here in the county. You know, that comes at a, a price, so we're looking at, the only other county out there, there's only one county that's done it, it's Carroll County. And there's also federal legislation out there that is trying to, if passed, will provide funds to local jurisdictions to, you know, fund a position in the counties to do that. So, we're hoping that passes and, and gets in, into law. And then Operation Green Light and Veteran Own Business Week is also coming up in November. And we'll be back here again for those, to, to highlight those and do green light.
So please make sure you light your homes up, November the sixth through the twelfth, green, to support our veterans here in Calver County.
Just one light bulb?
One, one.
We know. And here's our goals for the next year, we're coming into our third year and we wanna build that communications plan and we want to have that bene- that claims clinic in the county. And that, what that would do was allow folks to come in with their paperwork at an appointment and actually file their claim here in the county. We had it set up for August of this year and there's been some churn at the state level as they transitioned administrations and, long story short, they got busy and they couldn't do it, so we had to push it to April. So in April of twenty twenty-four, we're open to have that claims clinic at the Calvert Library where they're gonna have forty slots for individuals to come in with their paperwork, uh, sign up for that slot, talk to somebody what they need to bring and actually file the paperwork that day. So the VA will be here to push that button and enter into the system. And that's something we don't have here in the county and most times folks have to go, you know, elsewhere to do that. So, that's our, one of our biggest goals for next year is to actually see that through and do that. Keep going in these observances, uh, keep doing different observances in the county. We have a, Jeff King is one of our members, is, is working that to make sure that either, even if it's just a social media post, like, yesterday was the Air Force birthday, like, that type of stuff, right? Um, volunteer opportunities, so we, we had the Hospice of Chesapeake come out, I've been doing honor salutes for them for the last, uh, couple of months and it's a fantastic, you know, volunteer experience, very sobering, but very rewarding for the families as they're, you know, seeing their loved ones off into the next life. And it gave us kind of the idea that we wanna increase volunteer opportunities for veterans and military folks in the county and other means as well, so we're kind of exploring that. And then, last but not least, veteran tax credits, which, you know, hearing between the Curbing Commission and the other things going on, we know that the budgets are in a state of flux right now and we're not, you know, unsympath- are in a state of flux right now and we're not, you know, unsympathetic to that. Uh, but we are going to work with finance and budget over the next few months and, and figure out what's in the realm of possible, given the menu of options we provided, uh, last year when we, when we came before you to talk about veterans' tax credits. Cause it's not just one big lump. We can do different options to, you know, ease the financial burden, uh, in that case. Yep. And with that, I know it's been a long meeting.
How, how'd your breakfast go, uh, last Sunday?
Pardon me?
Your breakfast.
Oh, the breakfast was fantastic. We had a very good breakfast.
And you got upcoming dinner?
Well, we had one Friday night.
Okay.
We have steak night tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Steak night tonight.
Yep.
What's the beer?
I told Frank I'd probably meet him there.
That's right.
But we just want to remember that too, that, that we do have Veterans Day coming up and the ceremony here at the courthouse will be at 10:15. And we're hoping to see you out there if, if at all possible.
For sure. And we appreciate all the work you're doing, you know, for the short period of time you've stood up, you know, you've done great things and we, we support you wholeheartedly. And if you need something, we're here.
We're, we're honored to be a part of the Veterans Affairs Commission here.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your continued support. It's been there since the beginning and, uh, we look forward to working with you more and more and, uh, helping our veterans in this county. Seventy-three hundred, that's, that's a lot.
That's right. Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I believe that brings us to public comment.
I believe it does. The board adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right along with resolution 51 dash 20. Persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conducting of the board's business. All speakers must identify themselves on whether speaking as an individual will be allocated two minutes or as a authorized representative of a group where you be allocated five. For those attending virtually, if you risk to speak, please raise your hand. Is there anybody in the meeting room who wishes to provide public comment?
My name is Katie Blevins and I'm speaking for myself. I want to address the proposed and long overdue performance audit of the school system, which the BOE doesn't have to agree to. By law, you have the power to order it. At your joint meeting with the BOE in July, you had the opportunity to review nine categories, which comprise a full performance audit. Unsurprisingly, that list was narrowed down considerably to three items. I brought your attention serious crimes committed in CCPS, like procurement fraud and bid rigging and the district funding extra prescription insurance to supply former Sheriff Mike Evans' drug ring and health insurance to pay the many local medical providers who have prescribed for it, which was a payoff Evans extorted from the last superintendent to look the other way on crimes committed against children in the system. There's also the big problem of CCPS not knowing where a large chunk of their $24 million fund balance came from, meaning the money can't be spent in case it's restricted. If you care so much about transparency, why did you narrow the proposed audit down to only three categories, especially those least likely to uncover proof of crimes? A full performance audit will cost more than the limited audit you chose, but who cares? You have complained for so long, you have no power over CCPS, but could have ordered an audit years ago and are now finally exercising that power. You should exercise it to the fullest extent. It seems like you only want to figure out how to provide less funding to CCPS, but aren't concerned with the people who have been hurt or crimes committed, which is anything but transparent. You need to order a full performance audit, which is still nowhere near as thorough as a forensic and comprehensive audit. There are a lot bigger worries than a hundred and twenty-five retirement watches to cover. Terrible crimes have been committed. A lot of people have been hurt and Hart and Hans, you know about it. When people find out what you've known, they're going to be appalled. Yes, they are, Mr. Hans. They will be. Lot of people have been hurt. There needs to be a full performance audit, which still provides sometimes only a sampling of documents. I'll be happy to provide them the auditors.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned citizens of Calver County. Why we need an audit, take a tour of the Northern High School campus and look at the inequities between the girls and boys sports facilities and to figure out what happened to the $290,000 that was originally appropriated for eight tennis courts for Northern High School tennis team, half of which were never built. The original ed spec stated eight tennis courts for the girls and boys tennis team, only four were built, putting Northern High School at a major disadvantage when playing Huntingtown, a school with eight tennis courts built 19 years ago. Where did the money go? We need to know how the decisions and money is being allocated. Why did the Board of Ed approve $124,360 for the purchase of two new 2020 Ford Rangers and two new 2019 Ford F-350 pickup trucks for Northern High School? Why does Northern High School need four new trucks? Where are these pickup trucks housed? How did Northern High School recruit or entice the former head football coach from a successful program at Petuxton High School to Northern with a struggling football program penalized with sanctions? The former head coach stated, four of the new coaches will be former head football coaches. What was the budget for the former head coach and the four new coaches? After three years, the coach stepped down and left for DeMatha High School, which has a top nationally ranked football program. Northern's, Northern's present head football coach hails from Mount St. Joseph High School in Baltimore, where he coached the team to their first A championship. How was Northern able to recruit a top coach? What was the enticement? It's analogous to Coach Nick Saban leaving Alabama to coach at Towson University or former Duke basketball coach Gay to coach at Rutgers. How much did that cost? What is the budget for the new head coach and his coaching staff? In 2018, Northern combined varsity and JV football teams had a hundred and thirty player roster. Their practice field is twice as large as a football field and home games are played in the football stadium. While 100 yards away, the combined varsity and JV field hockey team share a practice field with the girls varsity soccer team and the boys varsity soccer team. Let me reiterate, that is four teams practicing on one field. This inept field creates, this inept field split creates a chaotic and inefficient atmosphere for the members of all teams to acquire the time and space needed to facilitate constructive practices. Home games for the varsity field hockey teams is played on the practice field, not in the football stadium. There has been an upgrade to the football stadium since the new Northern was built. New home team bleachers, another section of new bleachers, new press box, new PA system, new lights and flagpoles, temporary locker room with new locker room projected. There always seems to be money for the football program and not any money for the other teams. I heard there is no budget for athletic training at the high schools and yet Northern High School football stadium gets new visiting bleachers and a scoreboard this past year? How does that happen? During the building of the new Northern, the baseball team got a new, got a new beautiful baseball facility. There's a brand new six foot privacy fence surrounding the baseball field, new sod which gets watered daily by the new irrigation system, a new dugout rail padding with Northern's logo displayed on the front and a new custom seat bench and a dugout for the visiting team. Then there is a concession stand with bathrooms, large scoreboard and two batting cages. There are two sections of bleachers, one for the home team and one for the visiting team, which is next to the baseball storage shed. Several red and blue tables with seats sit along the fence. It is truly a spectacular facility. One would think the baseball team had won eight state championships, but wait, that would be the girls softball team. The baseball team has never won a state championship, let alone eight. The girls softball team with eight state championships got nothing. The softball team has two dugouts, which are outdated and unable to protect the players from the sun or rain, a section of bleachers to share with the visiting team, two batting cages, a blade of grass with no irrigation system, no shed, and a scoreboard, which is insufficient to showcase their eight state championships. There needs to be some accountability for how the money is being spent and distributed that could be done with an audit. I'm inviting all the commissioners to tour Northern High School with me at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joshua Johnson. I, I know, uh, this topic and I appreciate you today, uh, trying to find some solutions with it. It, it's important. Um, and, and it's time the emotions end too. Um, appreciate the audit. I know that you're, I trust you to be able to find out where that audit goes. And if there is some other place, if there's a rabbit hole, slush funds that have been proven, um, excesses that have been proven and shown by facts, um, that you're going to find that and you're going to, you're going to go along with it and, and find the solution for all of us so that we know how our taxpayer money is spent. That's what's most important here, that our kids are getting the benefit of the dollars that we're spending, um, with the, with a way of how we're, we're going to pay for it. I think it's important to know, you know, citizens, concerned citizens of Calver County found the $24 million. Um, that money can be used any way we would see fit really. Please make sure that that is taxpayer money. It's not Board of Ed money. It's not V O C C money. It's, it's all of our money, including your money. Um, we just need to see it spent responsibly. And if there's a question about how we're going to pay for the audit, I believe that that'd be first on the docket. Um, appreciate all you're doing and, uh, appreciate being thorough in what you're doing as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the meeting room? Mr. Cormier, Cormier, if you'd please unmute yourself and identify yourself in whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joe Cormier and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself today. I just want to thank you for recognizing the team at Southern Community for that swing set. I'd like to thank you for recognizing, uh, the team who, uh, was working with the older adults and persons with disabilities who have so many, uh, things going on in their lives that, you know, it could be homeless, could be addiction, uh, that they really need our support. I want to thank you for, uh, all your support for Mr. Temple or Dr. Temple and the Veterans Commission as a veteran in the county. Uh, it makes me feel like I'm really being taken care of, uh, in that extent. Uh, so thank you so much for your support for them. Uh, I would hope that, uh, this, uh, it's unfortunate that you and the school board couldn't come to an agreement on this audit. And my concern would be now that it's an MSD E's hands, that we're not going to have any control over what's going on or being able to put brakes on it. So, uh, let's, uh, follow it where it goes and do what we need to do. And if it comes out and says that they need more money, let's, uh, have more money available to them. But thank you so much for all you do for our citizens. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that was the last individual who has raised their hand.
So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, uh, fundraising season is in full swing. Um, attended a fundraiser for Senator Jack Bailey and he had a special guest, former Commissioner and former delegate Jerry Clark that was honored that night. Uh, Saturday went to Prince Frederick Volunteer Firehouse fundraiser. Sunday went to Ducks Unlimited fundraiser. And then on Monday, attended 23rd Annual, um, golf outing with the Calver County Lions Club and all they do with eyeglasses and hearing aid throughout the community. Uh, definitely, uh, um, addition, great addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ireland?
Uh, Thursday the 14th, went to Rod and Reel for the State of the County address, Chamber of Commerce coordinated this event. Uh, hopefully we answered some questions of our constituents who were there. Um, Rod and Reel staff did a wonderful job. I also attended Senator Bailey's event at Britton Bay, uh, where, uh, former delegate and Commissioner Jerry Clark was recognized for his service to state and county. On Sunday, went to Waterman's Festival in Solomons. Uh, boats from all over the bay came to the event, um, from Virginia, as far south as Virginia. Did an anchor and buoy toss where in excess of, uh, 50 children participated. The bleachers were full, the dock was full. Uh, people were actually sitting on the rocks in front of the bleachers. Um, it was very, very well attended. Uh, the Waterman Association did a great job putting it together and Danny Baker did a great job as the emcee. I heard he sang earlier and I missed that. I'm sorry I missed that.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I hope that's on TV.
Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Jennifer David, as I did earlier, for her customer service, um, in dealing with, uh, constituents, the TDRs. And this Thursday, September 21st, culinary students from CTA will be preparing chicken and waffles from 8:20 to 1:20. It's a $10 cash and only carryout event. Um, anybody who wants to attend, please do so.
Thank you. Mr. Rasso?
Um, well, all of us last Tuesday attended the, uh, cab groundbreaking ceremony and that, that was really nice. And I'm excited. Kept, keep looking for some action over there, but not seeing anything happening, but.
They're waiting on you. You did such a good job digging.
I know. I know they didn't have to come back. Okay. And then, uh, on the 13th, I went to Marham Court, um, met with some constituents there over the remnants of a massive fire and, uh, our, our county staff has been really very receptive in helping us as commissioners, um, get some resolution for the community. On the 14th, I attended the State of the County Breakfast at Rod and Reel and that was, that was nice. I really enjoyed that. Uh, later on in the day, the Kelly's, uh, hosted a hospice of the Chesapeake event. And I too attended the Waterman's Boat Docking Festival, sat on the rocks. Um, Danny Baker did a very good job. It was like, like Commissioner Ireland said, it was very well attended. Much, I thought last year was great and this year was even, uh, bigger attendance. And, uh, last night I attended, um, a DACA meeting, Dunkirk Area Concern Citizens Association meeting. And, um, that was, that was very informative. So we'll talk, we'll talk about that later. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrow?
I think I said enough today, Mr. President.
I know you're not out of breath.
I think I'm good.
So, uh, as was mentioned, I attended, uh, Senator Bailey's function and, uh, recognized Jerry Clark for his public service for many, many years of public service. Uh, too, went to the State of the County Breakfast with, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce at the Rod and Reel. Uh, if you hadn't been to the beach, you should see the construction project that's going on. You know, I don't think those of us that grew up in Calver County ever would have thought there'd been that kind of construction going on there at that property. It's, uh, quite a renovation going on. And, uh, next week is the beginning of the county fair and we talked about that earlier. Um, and also earlier today, we recognized Suicide Prevention Month and, uh, I tried to take notes. Uh, if you have issues or, uh, needs or you know of somebody, uh, you can reach out. There are lots of programs out to support you. I think I wrote down, you can dial 988 for Suicide Prevention Line. Um, it's just, uh, one of those things that I just can't, uh, I just don't know how someone can have that thought, that their life is not worth living. But we have too many out here that have those thoughts and, uh, we certainly want to provide all the support and help we can when they get in that situation. Um, and, uh, well, last Monday, um, we did interviews to replace the deputy county administrator. And I just want to say publicly, we had a great pool of candidates that we interviewed and hopefully we'll have someone in that position in the very near future. But, um, it was, uh, fulfilling to see a lot of talented people apply to work here in Calver County, uh, from as far away as Texas.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, we're looking forward to filling that chair as soon as possible. You never know.
Keep checking my page.
Exactly.
Are you standing on plastic down there?
So once again, it's very weak. Next week starts on Wednesday. Uh, please come out and support the local county fair.
Pray for good weather.
And pray for good weather.
Yes.
And, uh, I missed the weekend events. I was, I was attending a harvest festival. Corn harvest started last night and I was in the combine all weekend.
I may have seen that vehicle, maybe.
Mr. Harrow was complaining that somebody in a big machine was blocking traffic going there to make a road one day last week.
I knew it was, I knew it was him. I knew it was him. I was cracking up and I'm found, I'm going, it's, I knew it's buddy. I knew it is. And then it goes to the right and I see his big hands on the side. I said, I knew it.
I try to move when there's not much traffic.
That's a big piece of cheese. That thing's big.
Anyway, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. Uh, move to adjourn. That's all I have on mine.
I think we gotta go into executive session.
No.
No?
I triple checked. I know. I thought something was wrong.
Sorry. Yeah. Thank you. I have a motion second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you.